Signal back to East Hampton Media, hopefully. Maybe. There we go. Okay. All right. Very good. Calling to order the meeting of the Select Board for January 4th, 2022. Happy New Year, everybody. Amazing. It is New Year already. Yes. So we'll call the meeting to order, and if everybody would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Just to apply the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, this is for all.
Thanks. Thank you. Is that you? Good. Is that you? So we are trying out our hybrid system tonight. We have three of us present, and two of our members, Francine Tishman and Joy Piper, are going to be participating remotely, and Ed's going to be managing the computer. They're loud and clear. I think we'll hear them when they want to speak up, and all of our votes tonight, when we take them, will be by roll call vote. All right. So any words of wisdom as we start the new year? Any thoughts in particular?
Do you want to say something about Dick?
Dick Ferry, yes. Okay. Yes, good point. Or actually, maybe, Bob, would you like to say something about Dick Ferry? I mean, feel free to just pop up to the mic. You've known him very well here, and just say our...
Give our thanks.
Our thanks and our...
Well, we certainly, he was a good friend. He was probably my best friend.
Yes, Francine.
I'm having a difficult time understanding that someone is very garbled. Joy, can you hear all right?
I can barely.
Okay. See if I got a longer cable and see if I can move it to the middle of the room. You're going to have to manage it. Sorry, Chris.
Gee, thanks. Okay. So yeah, go ahead, Bob. So go ahead and start. We're talking about Dick Ferry, who passed away just this weekend.
So far as the town is concerned, he was a treasure of history, and I'm still gathering things that he gave to me in the last year or so. Just, it's a loss to the town. A very special loss.
Yeah. Exactly. So our thoughts go out to his family and friends, and we much appreciate all that he did for the town in his many, many roles and many years of being here as a resident and a friend to many, and a worker in Town Hall at the very end as well. So, yeah, really, any other? No? Okay. So yeah, we kind of went through a meeting last week, two weeks ago, I guess already, before the holidays, and we were so charged with our meeting, I don't know that we actually formally did say, you know, "Happy Holidays, Happy New Year" to everybody, but belatedly, I hope everybody had an enjoyable holiday season with family and friends, and stayed as safe as you possibly can and could. I, for one, am very glad that I no longer live in the DC area when I see the news and the snow down in DC and the 48-mile backup. I can't even fathom how people have survived the night down there. So we are very lucky to be where we are, I think. So with that, we don't have any public hearings or presentations tonight. We're going to start off with open time for the public, and I know I've had one person ask me. So Kate, I think you're the person for open time for a minute or two or three?
Caitlin Rooks, 189 College Highway, speaking as a member of the Board of Health. We have our clinic this Saturday, January 8th. We actually booked all of the adult slots, so they just added 60 more so we could try to get a few more people vaccinated, which is excellent.
How many is that, Kate?
240 if we book all of the appointments. And there's 25 pediatric slots left. 12-plus boosters have been approved by the FDA but are not yet approved at the state level for administration. If they update me about that prior to Saturday, they said they will give those doses, and I will communicate about that. There's been a lot of questions about that. But we still have some slots available on the North Hampton website if people are interested in getting vaccinated. My presentation tonight is briefly about access to rapid tests in town. Rapid tests just became available through state contracts to municipalities. I know that there's 2.1 million that were given out to select communities. Southampton was not one of those communities, but there's been a lot of questions about how can we get access to rapid tests, so I've done a little bit of research. What we know is that the demand for rapid antigen tests and PCR tests is likely to increase significantly, and so the reason we're presenting this tonight is because if we are to proceed with ordering tests, that does not guarantee that there will be tests to purchase, and it will also likely take several weeks for the town to receive those tests once it goes through the purchasing process. So I think if we are going to proceed with purchasing tests, sooner is better. There are changes in the testing guidelines in a couple different ways, right? So the CDC is evaluating whether or not rapid antigen testing will be required to release people from isolation after five days. I don't have the answer on that yet, but it is a strong consideration, so that will further put a strain on the existing supply chain, and the demand is so high right now. Nobody can find tests. I've been in touch with Stephanie Foss, who's the nurse for our school district. She said that they're now allowing parents to use a rapid test as a diagnostic tool that's self-administered. They're no longer requiring for a medical provider to administer a test, so they are using that as a tool to identify students who have COVID. They're also considering whether or not they're going to require students after five days to have a negative rapid test to be able to come back to school after five days. And so I did pose the questions. I said, you know, if parents are unable to access tests, what would that look like? Because of course, if they have to stay out of school for longer than five days, it's going to put more of a strain on families. Stephanie did say that any testing that's done out of pooled testing, test and stay, is the responsibility of the families to identify that test, right? So families are really struggling to find access to PCR tests and rapid tests right now because there's no appointments. My mom waited in line with my son for four hours yesterday trying to get him tested to go back to daycare. There are other vulnerable groups in town, such as the Council on Aging, that have expressed interest in pursuing access to rapid testing, and we know that this Omicron surge is just starting. There was a million cases today. We don't know where that's going to go over the next several weeks, but we do anticipate that that demand is going to continue to increase. The tests that are purchased through the state contract are acquired through COMBIs, which I understand Ed knows all about, so hopefully he can give you a little bit more information there. I, too, am trying to learn about the process for not just Board of Health, but also for Smith College. So I'm going to attend a webinar, the first webinar, which is on January 6th at 1:00, so we'll learn a little bit more there. I have a spreadsheet for all of you outlining the costs of these tests, and what we've learned is it's between $5 and $26 a test, so there's a huge variation in cost. But the tests that are $5 don't reflect the intense delivery fees that are incurred with shipment. Some of the order minimum quantities range from 288 tests to 15,000 tests, and the price varies greatly. In fact, I'll shuffle around here. I don't think anyone has trouble hearing.
Looks like you've already learned a lot. Chris and I were looking at it this afternoon.
It's actually really crazy. They said that none of this is guaranteed to last any period of time, and they do hope to be adding additional vendors. But I will give you a personal example. I purchased tests through the enterprise iHealth today, and I've had to split my order into two because of a credit card limit, and in between the one hour between my two tests, there were 400 orders placed, and they sold out of half of their tests. So I'm just putting that out there that, you know, this information that I'm providing might not necessarily be the case by the time we go to purchase the tests. A few things about rapid testing. So rapid tests, we know that the reason they're packaged in two-packs is because they're not the most sensitive of tests, so they recommend that you repeat that test, right? That you do serial testing, meaning two tests that are spaced out over 24 hours, kind of as a confirmation to make sure that you're not positive. The other thing we know about rapid tests is that they're the most reliable when people are symptomatic, so they're not the best screening tool when people are either really early in their infection or at the tail end of their infection. It's just not sensitive enough. But we do know it's a fairly reliable tool in diagnosing people who are symptomatic. It's also a good tool for people who have been identified as a contact to test after five days and make sure that they're at lower risk of spreading COVID, especially when there's lack of access to other tests. The one caveat to rapid testing, and we'll see this happening more and more across the country, is that a rapid test does not guarantee that it's reported to the national health system or reported through Maven, so what it will result in is a likely under-reporting of cases, and we're already seeing that. And it's going to make contact tracing more challenging because people are going to take it upon themselves to contact trace, which isn't always the best tool. My recommendation would be, if we're going to proceed with rapid testing, to instead of allocating a number of tests, because this spreadsheet could very well change, to try to ballpark the amount of money that you would want to allocate towards spending on tests, because shipping is not reflected in that spreadsheet, and the shipping for my test that I purchased outside of the state contract was free shipping, but the iHealth through the state contract was $1,000 for shipping. So even though it's a much lower price per test, if you purchase the 15,000 tests, which is the order minimum, you still are going to incur massive shipping charges. So my feeling is if the tests are going to cost an average of $8 to $10 apiece, maybe not including shipping, that it's going to be easier to allocate a specific amount of money instead of trying to say how many tests we're going to purchase. The other question would be, if we do purchase rapid tests, how they would be distributed? So I've spoken to a couple towns about how they've distributed tests, and some of them have actually used a town census and distributed them either by person or by family. And of course, that needs to be factored into the decision as well, because to track whether or not you're just going to have them available for people to pick up is much different than if we're actually going to use a ledger. And for instance, for people who have schoolchildren, you know, maybe we could distribute some through the school as just a way to kind of spread it out, because distributing anywhere between 7,000 and 14,000 COVID tests is going to be a little bit of a burden. Do you have any questions?
I guess, why are we on this path? Where, I must have missed something. Where are we at the level where we're considering ordering these?
Yeah, we had a DLS bulletin that came out announcing the ability for municipalities to purchase tests, and the idea would be that they would be gone very quickly. So if we were going to jump on the bandwagon to get some for town for home use, because people are not able to find at-home tests very easily, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there was something in the paper today about PCR tests being available now. Certainly, Hoyop Community's been having them on a drive-through basis pretty well, and then...
And then they canceled drive-through yesterday because there was too many people who wanted the test.
Really? Okay. Well, East Hampton and North Hampton, so the PCR tests are at least generally available for those that can drive and get there to get them done.
Correct.
But this would be the alternative, would it be to have some at home so that people that have an event coming up and they wanted to self-test before they got together with family or friends or whatever, I'm gathering that's the ultimate purpose of doing this. And the idea was, should we not at least purchase some with some of our ARPA money is where this started as a discussion, I think.
And my personal feelings on that is it's really a town decision on whether or not we want to make these available for the town. It is a somewhat useful tool. It's also not the cheapest tool, but some people are paying, you know, paying insurance premiums at this point to do testing if they want to gather with family. There's a difference between testing for when you are exposed or you're having symptoms versus if you want to test to hang out with your family or gather, and insurance doesn't always cover those costs.
Right. No, I understand. I just wanted to understand how we got to this point where it sounds like there's, well, it is, you used the word of recommendation from the Board of Health for consideration.
So actually, that's a good point, because the Board of Health has not met yet. So I am just providing information, because really, the decision is going to be made based upon whether or not the town decides to allocate funding to purchase the tests. Do I think that testing is somewhat available? Yes, but I also don't think that we know over the next month or two how widely available testing will be and how to anticipate those challenges. I also don't know that we would get tests within the next three weeks to a month.
Just my last question on the self-testing. There's a short window that they're valid, like they expire relatively quickly. I think it's six months.
It is six months.
So none of these are shorter than that? If we're looking to solve a two-month problem?
So it's six months from the date of manufacturing, because the EAU has emergency-authorized these tests. Some of the tests after six months, the FDA will extend that shelf life, but I'm just going to say we have no idea if they're going to distribute tests to us that were just manufactured yesterday or two months ago. I also think we could reach out to them and ask them this information if we proceed in that direction.
Okay. Ready?
Kate, do you know the percentage of accuracy between the PCR test and these rapid tests? Because I know there are false negatives with the rapid.
So the chance of a fall, when you say false negative usually occurs either at the beginning of the illness or the end of the illness, when there's just not enough viral load to be detected. It does range between each of these tests, but these are specifically tests that were approved by the government to be used for testing. So these are not like off-label tests. It ranges between 75% to 80% with the rapid test for detection. But again, it depends on if you're having symptoms, you know, when you were exposed. So there's a lot of variables that come into play.
Well, unfortunate thing is that I think that there's always a delay, like, we need them now. I mean, like, we need them a week ago, and I think that's what ends up happening is, whatever it is, whether it's masks or whether it's vaccine or anything, trying to get it like as soon as it's available is part of the problem. So I think it's not even worth worrying about. I mean, distribution, we put it everywhere. We encourage its use. If it's going to change behavior, I support it. We have, you know, ARPA funds. I mean, this is exactly what it's for. It just seems like, I don't know, I just feel like if it's going to allow people to either quarantine or get back to whatever they were doing, I think it's worth it.
Well, and I think, in my mind, and two things, well, two questions. One is, have you found in your work so far, looking at this or accessing this, whether there's any better way to go versus the manufacturer versus the distributor? Is there any...
Well, I think that's why we need Ed to get into COMBIs and see what it looks like, because my, what I don't understand about the supply chain is if the state is bulk purchasing tests and then being distributed at the state level, or if they're being distributed directly from the manufacturer. I have reached out to many of these people on the list just to kind of have their email and start a communication. They honestly want to know how many tests you want and when you want them by. That's all, you know, and until then, they're really not able to answer questions.
Okay. And the challenge is trying to figure out whether, you know, how many, how many tests is enough? How many is, you know, way overload, kind of your concern perhaps, and how we figure that magical number out, which is a challenge? I mean, some of these are almost $10 a test, others are two tests, so yeah, well, they basically are going to be...
They're basically going to be $8 to $10 per test, and that may or may not include shipping depending where they're coming from.
So the one for iHealth, for example, just looking at this, you're looking at two tests per kit and $5, so it's $10 per kit, so that's $150,000 if that's the minimum order.
Right, 15,000.
Fifteen, yeah, right.
Which is really 30,000.
I mean, to me, that doesn't seem like even an option.
Yeah.
Why would we do that with the shelf life of what it is? I'd look down to the next one.
That's an overkill. Exactly. So I mean, you know, looking down on the list, we'd have to figure out which one is the most likely, and this Pure Medical is a little bit more reasonable in terms of a minimum quality, quantity, rather. That's a thought. So, okay.
Chris?
Yeah, another question?
Well, it's just we're on public comment, right?
Yeah, no, I'm seeing that. And I would just want to ask Francine and Joy, I'm going to try and figure out how to bring you into this conversation. Do you have some questions before, we've got a couple people in the audience that would like to say something?
That's Kate.
Go ahead, Joy. I can hear you, I think, or...
I don't have any either, Chris, at this time.
Okay. Okay. Good. Thanks. Just wanted to make sure, got to figure out how to manage this.
And if there's any questions we don't know the answer to, I'm certainly happy to, you know, reach out and get more information. Of course, this all came up literally this past week.
Yeah, no, I mean, the DLS just sent this notice out really a few days before the...
Is the Board of Health planning to meet this week or next week?
We have a meeting on the 10th, on Monday.
Monday.
Yeah, okay.
But we were just concerned that if we waited to meet and then bring it back to another Select Board meeting, we're losing another two weeks, and by then, you know, everything could look very different.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Do we have a contract with any of these vendors already, like McKesson, for example?
No, but that's what the state contracts are for. It lets us as a municipality join in on those.
If we were to go into COMBIs tomorrow and order 1,000 tests from the Pure Medical, does it sound like it's a pretty quick thing, right?
It just depends on the availability of them. But you would, yeah, you would find out when you went to try to order them.
When you try to order them.
As long as we knew how many we were interested in ordering, I could reach out to the specific vendor. I probably have already started an email chain with them just to try to get some information.
The pallet quality here, so quantity, rather, 200, sorry, 2,880 two-packs, so that's 5,760 tests.
Right.
At $9.50 a test is the way this is reading out here. Okay. So we'd have to just figure out whether, you know, whether we can buy them in packs rather than a whole pallet worth. Is that really what we want to do? Kind of thing. I saw a question in the audience. Mark, I'll have you come on up, please, and introduce yourself, please.
Mark Cassis, 19 Fulmer Road, actually speaking partly as prior retired physician. But the state does have a mail-in for individual kits. We should make sure we, people are aware of the website so we don't have to drain all of our resources, but you can go online, they send you a PCR kit, you send it back. There is a time delay, but it's another resource for the town that doesn't have any expense for the town.
It's PCR, that's PCR.
It's a PCR test, a website, they send it pretty quickly, and I don't know the turnaround time after it's sent in, but...
Is that from mass.gov?
This is mass.gov, so it's just another way to maximize our resources.
Right, yeah. Right. So those would be the PCR tests versus the rapid tests that you're talking about here?
Yes, and those are for people who have been exposed or experiencing symptoms.
Can you mail it in?
Yes.
Yeah.
They mail it to you pretty quickly.
Yeah. These, I know the rapid tests had been available at the pharmacies over the last week or so before the holidays, and then I think they got sold out very, very quickly. So, I don't know, where, what should we do here? Should we take a, take a thought about having Ed investigate this on the state website and see what the minimum is we can order? Are we thinking that we want to move on this tonight? And I don't know, I don't know if we figure out a maximum dollar amount, or as Kate was suggesting, or a number of tests. I mean...
Well, I mean, if you look at the Blue Medical, it says here, minimum order is one case, which is equal to 144 two-packs. So that's not a lot. So I don't think that the minimum order is an issue here. I think that, yeah, I...
I mean, the next, the next one up is a pallet quantity.
Chris, Cindy, Cindy wants to...
Yeah, Cindy, come on up.
Hi, Cindy Palmer. Just a thought, you know, some people aren't even going any place because they're so nervous. They're doing things, double masking, they're controlling. The need won't be the same. The other thing is, some people are going directly to their medical providers when they're not sure what to do. We already heard of another alternative of, you know, ordering the online. I'm going to support whatever your decision is, but I'm thinking the minimum is where you'd go, because then you've got that whole distribution question, and that's just my thought, you know?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I didn't, I don't see, I don't see this as an urgent need. I understand the HCC shut down, but I also believe that a lot of that is folks being off and waiting until Monday, or Sunday. Well, Sunday they were closed, so they couldn't go, waiting until Monday, and they just overwhelmed the system. And seeing it, I mean, today, granted it's Springfield, but today already had better results, they didn't have to shut down the system. So I don't necessarily, however, Chris, I do take, I understand your argument about the, a certain portion of our town population that maybe is not mobile and has a concern wants to take tests, so I definitely want to be conscious of that. I just, I don't know, and I guess it goes to how many we're going to order, because if we're going to, you know, we're a population of 6,200. Are we going to order 12,000? I don't think that's needed. I don't think we need one for every house, and the schools are being taken care of, the kids are in there and they want to be tested, the pool testing's happening, and then that triggers, I just think...
But I think what I heard from Kate, and listen, I don't disagree with that. What you said, though, from when you're talking to the nurse, is that if the kids at school have been exposed or tested positive and have to be home...
They're reviewing that currently to determine whether or not they want to require testing, and my question to Stephanie was, if we can't get access to a test...
What are we going to do?
What do they do?
You can't, you know, DESI is not recommending testing, which makes it tricky, because then kids are in school, you know, and they want, they're considering requiring it, and so I said, well, rapid test is a great strategy, but unfortunately, rapid testing is not always available, and her feedback was it would be really helpful to parents to have those rapid tests available.
Yeah. Okay.
Right. So just to, so again, DESI's not requiring it, but up until Friday, DESI wasn't even going to provide testing to teachers, and then all of a sudden, there's this late drive up to Pittsfield to get it.
Yeah, I mean, things are changing like overnight. That's a problem.
I agree.
By the time we meet again, things will have changed five times, I'm sure.
So...
So that's part of our problem.
I guess that's my way of kind of saying I'm open to something, but I mean, I don't know how big of it, and I'll rely more on you guys.
I think there's a lot of interest in having the tests available. I think that to go out of the home and be exposed, even to get tested, I think concerns a lot of people, and if people are going to, I mean, I tried to get a test, I wanted a PCR, because I feel like it's more accurate. In order to travel, I couldn't go this weekend because I couldn't get a test, so I had to book a test for next Wednesday. So I do think there's a lot of interest in having the test available, and I think we should probably get a, you know, authorize up to a certain amount. We have right now, I mean, I know ARPA, we're trying to be, you know, methodical about it and do a survey, and what do people want to spend it on? It's a good amount of money for infrastructure and all that sort of thing, but, you know, I didn't really think that was, I had concerns about, I mean, there's a lot of vaccine clinics happening all over the place, and you just told me that they just, you just filled up pretty much. So I just think that there is, there's definitely an interest, and I think that there's a need, and people are calling the senior center. I mean, my son lives in DC, he got clobbered with snow, but he said that they just go to the library, they pick up a test, and they drop in all these drop centers, and then they get a phone call or email about whether it's negative or positive, so I think the more we can make it available for people, the better.
Did you say it's a two-pack? You take the first one, and because it's not necessarily the most durable, you should take the second one as well? So it's a one-two-pack for one person for one test? Right? You take two samples?
That's what I was reading in info sheets for most of the tests. They recommend that serial testing is a better way of confirming.
Sorry. They recommend that serial testing, doing two tests 24 hours apart, especially if you've been exposed or you're having symptoms, is a better way to ensure that your diagnosis is correct.
And if the first one's false positive, 24 hours later, you have that second one, and then, or no, false?
Negative.
Negative.
The false positive rates on these tests are extremely low. You're more likely to test negative because you have a low viral load.
Right. So maybe the 140, the minimum order of the case, which is 144, I mean, it's 288 tests, but it's really 144 people?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I was going to suggest that we...
If we triple that, that's 432.
Five times over, for example, five packs.
And it's got a one-week delivery. I mean, if we blow through them immediately, we could place another order.
If they exist, yeah. But I mean, if you did even five packs, that's 1,440. Check my math on that. Is that right? A pack is two tests.
720.
Right. Two of them is 576.
Right.
To your point, John, I will just, I will just say that if the CDC says that you need to test to release yourself from isolation, this is going to look completely different, right? And so that is a variable that might change in between now and the next select board meeting. And of course, I don't want to belabor this, right? It is, it is an expense, right? But in two weeks, if the CDC says now you need to have a test to be released from isolation, this supply chain might get extremely overwhelmed very quickly.
Yeah, so you got to walk, so in my view, you got to walk the fine line of stockpiling N95 masks that are locked in some rooms, not that we have any, but, you know, that aren't being used, to not having, where is that number without?
Yeah.
Being conscious of the dollars spent, is there a way to get the program started? Look for more guidance, because they're constantly changing it.
Yeah, of course.
And ramp up or ramp down.
Well, here's, here's a thought. I mean, if this is, if one case is 144 two-packs, so that's 288 tests. So if we did five cases, that gets you 1,440 tests. At 9.50 a test, that's around $13,600.
Right, but each person gets two tests, the two-pack, they have to take it twice. So there's only 144 people.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so 144 times five packs, that's only 720 people.
No, I'm saying five cases.
Yeah, I'm sorry, minimum order is one case, which is 144.
Which is 288 tests, right.
But each person is going to take a full two-pack.
Right, right. So I'm saying five, five cases at least, is what I'm saying, not packs.
Well, I looked at it like if we ended up getting.
Right, so it'd be 1,440 tests, that would serve us 720 people.
That's what I, that's, that would be a figure, but it's not, I mean, I don't know what's the right figure, so, yeah, I don't.
Well, if we ended up getting, the minimum one is one case, we get three cases, that would basically provide, it would be about, we could authorize $5,000 for the testing, and that'll give us probably three cases. If you want more than that, then.
Know what shipping is. I mean, I, I think I would go a little bit higher, honestly.
Okay.
I think, I mean, if we did the five cases, for example.
That's 720 people would get tested. 144 times five is 720, and at $9.50 per case, it would be 6,800.
Assuming somebody gets, no, assuming somebody gets two tests, so.
Yeah.
It's 1,440 cases times nine.
But it's a double pack, it's.
Right, I'm still using the 144, John.
So.
Well, how about a maximum of like $15,000, including shipping, or something like that? I mean, I mean, I'm picking a number, I don't know, we can sit here all night and figure out math, but, I mean, let's just pick a dollar number and say what we can get for it. I don't know. Joy, want to say something? Joy, no?
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I support the higher number, because, as you said, I, I think we'll just be, we're a little bit behind the curve already. And I think, you know, for the next four to six weeks, we're going to be, like, catch-up. So I think having a supply, and already people have been asking, you know, of the senior center, and, you know, for me personally, where can they get tests, because they're not available in the stores? I think if we, we could do something to help people, those people in those situations, I think it would be a good idea.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, so, pick a number, guys. I'm sorry. We have one more comment? Go ahead, please.
I just want to make a comment. I'm Ellen Singh-Hass, 19 Fulmer Road. I'm no longer the school physician, but I was the school physician for, I don't know how many years, more than 20. And when you think, first of all, I, I support the, the town purchasing, I don't know what, the maximum number of tests that you can purchase, but I also want you to think carefully about how you're going to distribute these. And of course, the senior center is an important place, but I also want you to think about the schools, because we, we've got a, really a serious situation with schoolchildren now, with this COVID epidemic. And being able to provide these rapid tests to allow the students to re-enter schools would be a great allocation of resources that would ripple through, you know, families who are working, who have working parents, whatever. So I, I would just support maximum allocation and allowing the school nurses to have, you know, access to, to this, to enable students to get back to school.
Thank you.
So that's one of my follow-up questions, is how, how are we going to administer this? Who's going to track it?
Yeah, well, I think that's.
Town administrator.
That's, that's a question, no, and I think, honestly, we, you know, assuming that we're going to have at least a couple of weeks, at least, before anything, if we can get these even ordered.
Yeah.
If we're lucky, we get a couple of weeks turnaround. I think we've got, I'm not trying to put it off, but I think we don't have to have all the, all the details worked out tonight. I mean, I'm certainly thinking, library, school, maybe, senior center, something here in town hall, wherever we can make them available. But I guess my thought is, unlike what yours, I think maybe Ellen just said, I guess, in my head, I was not assuming we would be tracking them. To me, the goal would be to get tests out and available. That the extra burden of tracking them, for what purpose? It's not going to be reported into Maven, to my knowledge, unless people self-reported, right? And then, all you're, all you're doing, I mean, if we could have somebody, you know, sign and say, yes, I took a test for my family, my name is Chris Fowles, whatever, but to have somebody cross-check lists to make sure that I didn't go to the COA and get one, and then run to the library and get one, and then run downtown and get another one, that isn't, that isn't what the goal of the whole thing is, in my mind, but that's my opinion.
No, I understand that, but I would be concerned of hoarders. I, I would be concerned of somebody going around stockpiling, collecting all these, and if we're, if we're going to use the town's funds, which, the ARPA funds, which is calculated based on our residency, then it, it should go out fairly to residents. If we have a surplus afterwards.
Yeah.
Second round, but, I mean, I think there has to be some way to do it.
Maybe we can ask the Board of Health to kind of look into that on Monday, if you give us recommendations on distribution.
Give some ideas on, on distribution, yeah, but, go ahead, Christina, yeah, please.
Christina Madsen, Rattle Hill, I'm just wondering, can you make some available at a cost? I would be happy to pay for a rapid test if they were available, and does it have to be a full expenditure on the town's part?
Well, that's a good point. Good point, too. Again, sell them at a reduced price or something like that, too. But again, that, that entails, yeah, entail, enables, it's, sorry, it entails more work in terms of distribution. When you've got to have something for sale, and somebody's got to be, you're going to have to not count on just the, you know, the staff person at the front desk to just simply distribute a test. Somebody's going to have to, you know, keep track of money, and, I mean, that's, that's a whole other cost, and I think that's maybe where Kate was going with the idea of having to have a paid person be there to, to carry out distribution, which just, it's not impossible, but it just complicates things, I think, a little bit, but go ahead.
So if they were available at the library and other places that you've mentioned, it could be a donation, too. It would seem as though you could get some of your expenditure back.
Yep, okay.
I would certainly be willing to do that.
That's a valid point, too.
Expect to do that.
Okay, that's a valid point, yeah, okay, thanks. All right, last comment, and then we're going to get off this issue.
Just a, just a quickie. I happened to be at Walmart when they got a shipment in of about three boxes, and the two-pack for the quick home test there, I paid $25.
Yep.
Wow.
Yep, exactly, yeah. And now you can't even find them. So, all right, so how about if I?
One clarifying question, Kate. On the, the pure blue medical, which seems to be the one we're focused on, right, it's, it says on-go two-pack antigen, two tests per kit. Pricing is 9.50 per test. So is it 9.50 per unit, or is it really?
9.50 per test.
So it's $19 per pack?
Oh, yeah, right.
You got to double that price.
Correct.
Good point.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, would somebody like to make a motion, so that we can put out, I'm, I'm thinking we put out maybe a dollar figure?
Yeah.
Rather than, you know, putting out a maximum up-to-figure to give Ed some, some guidance, because we don't know what the shipping cost might be in this, to at least investigate this, and if we find something that we can order pronto, that we actually go ahead and, and place that order? Does that sound like a reasonable, I mean, Ed, I mean, give us your thoughts. You've done with Tom Bies, more than we have, obviously.
Yeah, that'll work.
Yeah? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
So, I guess I, I'd make a motion to authorize up to $15,000 on kits, and an additional $2,000 separate for shipping, if needed maximum, to be allocated from the ARPA funds to procure as many tests as possible at that price.
Okay. All right, could I have a second?
I'll second.
That number works on five, five.
Who seconded?
Francine, second, thank you. All right, any further discussion on this? All right. Okay, so if that's the way we have the motion, let's go ahead and have a roll call vote, please. All those in favor?
Lumbras, aye.
Roden, aye.
Francine?
Piper, aye.
Piper, aye. Francine?
Dishman, aye.
Fowles, aye. Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Thanks, Kate. It's not an easy situation here, and again, the situation has changed so much even since you came before us, two weeks ago, I think, about the vaccine clinic, that this was not even in the, in the horizon, you know, whatsoever. And so, all these things keep happening every two or three days, and so, we're, we're not on top of the curve ball, but we at least can join the game with other towns here. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
And that amount, I think if I did the math right, is about 1,500 to 1,600 tests. So if the Board of Health on Monday could just discuss distribution and maybe make a recommendation, Francine is our liaison of Board of Health, she can, you know, maybe work with Ed on it.
Mm-hmm, good. Thank you very much. All right, appreciate it. Thanks, Kate. All right. Any other open time for the public? I think most people are here.
Thanks, Kate.
For appointments and other things, right? Okay. All right, at this point, can I, sir, are you in a time limit? Are you okay?
I'm okay, I didn't know if you wanted.
No, no, it's okay, we've got a couple of things right before you, though, if that's okay. So quarterly reports, we're going to quickly, we've got two tonight. Veterans Department actually had given their, their, their written materials, I think the last meeting, Jerry couldn't be here, and Ed kind of read those out. Jerry was hoping to be here tonight to kind of go through it himself, and then also couldn't make it tonight. So we'll just jump right into historical, and then the Greenway report. So Bob Cozumbe, please, come on up. And thank you, guys, for coming, and also providing some written information. It helps us just to get some information about what's going on out there in some of the committees, and even though we have liaisons to many of them, we don't have them to all of them, and it just helps to hear directly from those that are involved. So thanks, Bob.
Bob Cozumbe, Historical Commission Chair. It's been about a year and a half since I made any report to you, and I'll try and be brief here, but I think you have a copy of this, but in spite of the COVID considerations in the past 12 months, we have been active. We reviewed about four, at four requests regarding renovations slash demolition of historic properties, all of them were resolved. We have not opened the Schoolhouse Museum during the warmer weather because of COVID, and also because we always did that in, in tandem with Clark Chapman House, which has not been available because of reconstruction going on there. The commission has representation on CPC, the Safety Complex Committee, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and Open Space Committees. Currently, what we're working on, and have been working on for a while, is we're working in tandem with the administrator on what is needed to stabilize the Old Town Hall. That project is currently awaiting an assessment of immediate needs there. During the past year and a half, we have been working with five other communities with regard to the New Haven-Northampton Canal Project, and we've done that in cooperation with PVPC and the other five communities that house the 1830s historic canal. The purpose is to map that canal digitally, and to perhaps gain state and federal recognition of its existence in Massachusetts. Connecticut has gained that recognition, and as a matter of fact, their portion is on the National Register. Southampton has a pretty good stake in this, in that our Lockville District is a significant contributor, because it had that, made the major lock, and also the adjoining, what was the adjoining storehouse, that's the Goral House, and, on one side, and a hotel on the other side. PVC, PVPC is managing that. We have just recently awarded a contract for that purpose, and that contract, the cost of that contract will be shared by the, all of the towns, Southwick, Russell, Westphal, Southampton, East Hampton, and Northampton. We have been invited, as a commission, to take part in discussions with the Safety Complex Committee, once that committee is formed and takes up new considerations. We are also, our next step will be to take up the implementation guidelines with regard to the town's master plan. One thing I'd like to bring out to this committee, and also town administrator, and.
That's town clerk, which is all of this, too. What I'm about to talk about here. It's a little heavy, but.
Were you supposed to remove those from the building, Bob?
So you can see.
I have, I have special permission.
1751 to 1740, sorry, 1715 to 1741, huh?
Oh, they're in pretty good shape, actually.
The, the attic of the Old Town Hall, it currently houses a lot of things, but one of them that I'm concerned about is about 300 or so books that are being stored there, not in very good storage conditions. But what is there are volumes that go back as far as 1692, and they include the action resolves of the Territory slash State of Massachusetts, annual reports published by various state agencies going back that far, Massachusetts reports, which are cases of the State Supreme Judicial Court, and Mass General Laws, which are historical legal documents. So all of those things are, I'm guessing about 300 or so books. I've been in contact with Mass Historic, the Mass Archives, and various libraries about these books, because, quite frankly, they are all available online.
Really?
Up to, before 1959. 1959, I think, and on, is not available online yet. But these, all of these are available, digitized online, and from a research point of view, can be used. I don't know that individual towns have gotten rid of theirs. I know Forbes Library has gotten rid of their books, and perhaps some of the other towns have, too. Our books appear to be in decent shape, but who knows for how long? The one thing that bothers me is that I, I went to a state resource, which is a resource for retention of public records. And lo and behold, under one category, they list historically significant publications. Now, I don't know whether these would fall into that category or not, but historically significant publications are to be retained permanently, according to what the state I don't know what to do about this, except that I know if we allow them to stay there, some of them, incidentally, are already falling apart. If we allow them to stay there another 50 years, never mind 300, they're going to, they're going to deteriorate further. And I just need some guidance as to what, what you think might be appropriate here.
So Bob, these are not specific to Southampton, these are Mass General Laws and various things that came to us from Massachusetts, the state?
From every town, and every city and town in Massachusetts got one of these to cover every single year, 1692 and even today. If you look, if you look in town clerk's office, she has several of the modern ones.
Right.
Up on her shelves there. What is in Old Town Hall, I don't think goes probably up to about 1,900 or so. So.
But these would have been given out, these are from the state, they would have been given out to the towns at the time.
Yes.
So it's given, according to this, from the, the province of Massachusetts Bay, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. It's amazing that the shape these are in, this is correct.
Yeah, they're, they're not bad. They are interesting, they, I, I consider them to be historical artifacts, but, I don't know. The, the point here is that if we choose to keep them.
Where to put them.
Where do you put them?
Yeah.
If we choose not to keep them, then what do we do with them?
Yeah, yeah.
That's not historical commission's decision to make, I don't believe, but.
Okay.
I bring that out for, to your attention for further guidance on it.
Great, okay. Well, I think I will maybe take a leap of faith here and say that I doubt we're going to make a decision on this tonight.
No. I respect you.
It's, it's, it's good to know that, you know, about this issue. I mean, I, I sort of have passed through, and, and, from the parking lot level, you can look up in the windows and see something up there in the windows, but I had no idea really what's up there.
Incidentally, I have about 10 of them in the old schoolhouse.
I put them in there, and the rest are still up.
Yeah, okay.
Well, can you just repeat? Who did you say determined that it was of historical significance, or that it's considered a historical document? You mentioned that some authority had suggested that.
No, I'm suggesting that. I think, I consider them to be historical artifacts.
Okay.
The guidance from Massachusetts for retention of records.
Okay.
Which is official.
Yeah.
It's an official document. Says that historical publications.
Yeah.
Should be kept in perpetuity.
Yeah.
Now, whether that continues to be so, I'm sure this retention guideline was written before the state had the ability to put them online.
Right, yeah. I'm amazed that that's already digitized.
There is a form to be filled out that go, and I forget which office, there's an office in Boston, the Office of Public Records, I think, that you would say, this is what I have, do I have authorization to destroy them, yes or no?
I believe what that form is, is your intention.
Correct. So only, so that would satisfy the question of whether or not we could even dispose of them if we wanted to.
Yeah.
You know, that might be the first step.
And, yeah, the first step might be to execute that form and see what they say.
Correct.
See that reaction.
Take it from there.
Good point, good. Well, that's very interesting. So thank you for bringing that forward. I think that's something we'll keep on our, on our list of things to not get lost and come back around to, but that definitely is something we ought to pay attention to and help you make a decision on. I think you're right, it's not totally in the hands of the Historical Commission. I think that's really more of a town entity, Select Board entity.
Right.
Decision joint with you guys as well. So thanks for bringing that forward. Appreciate it. Good. Any other questions there?
Are they used by anybody for any purpose?
At now, nobody can access them now, but felt before.
I doubt it. I do, I do recall, maybe about six months ago, I spoke to Lucy about the recent ones, and she said occasionally, the recent ones are, but these that are in Old Town Hall, I mean, how long have they been there? And no one's, no one's asked about the ones there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, all right. Thank you very much, Bob.
Can we add that to the pending items so we don't lose track? I mean, my.
Why does everything come up and add to a list? Everyone looks down at me.
You're the one that does the draft agenda, that's why. I mean, my sense is if it's already digitized and it's not specific to Southampton and no one's using it on any kind of regular basis, I don't want to add to a fire hazard. I mean, we had, we had to deal with that issue, unless the Historical, you know, Society has a recommendation.
Yeah, so, okay. Commission, that's society. Yeah, so we'll keep it on our tick list for a little bit, though, and let us, let us mull this over and see, but if you have other, other information, if you do decide to put in that form and to see what the first reaction is, then that might give us some, some marching orders in terms of whether it's worth spending a lot of power to figure out how to preserve them somewhere, because I think the space is gonna be an issue for sure. Yeah, good. All right, thanks. Anything else?
Thank you.
No? Christina, something? Part of the Historical Commission? Come on up, quick.
Just to him, Edson Rattlehill, I just want to say that it would really, they could be housed on one large bookshelf. It's not a whole library of books, so storage, yes, is an issue because there's no immediate place to move them to, but they're contained on one wall, the front wall of that building.
300 volumes sounds like a lot.
Well, it's a bookcaseful. What would you say, like 10 feet?
Okay.
By?
A little bit more.
I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna say it's probably more like 16 feet by about eight feet high, I'd say.
Could I just ask a question that's somewhat related, Christina, while you're still there? Or Bob, we, an envelope study was done on the Old Town Hall, and there was a subgroup that was gonna be working together to make recommendations. What's the timetable on that?
At this point, we've gone back out, we've met, and it's gone back out to Hill and Associates to get us some information about doing a scope of work. Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, basically, the committee is looking to get a scope of work to begin with probably the most important pieces, or shall we say, the most fragile pieces, to bring that forward, whether it be through CPC funds, or capital item, or what have you.
Okay. So we have put another feeler back out to Hill and Associates. Didn't happen over the holidays, they didn't respond to us, so hopefully they will get back to us.
No, they were closed for the holidays, so I would expect something back from them this week.
Hopefully so. Okay, next, Greenway Committee. Aaron, please.
Okay. Aaron Towser, Palmer Meadow Extension, Chair of the Greenway Committee. I did submit a written summary, so I'll kind of just go through the prime points for the project as we speak. I'll also refer to where we are as Phase 1, which is the initial three and a half mile corridor from Coleman Road to Route 10, the Sheldon's intersection there. So as of right now, acquisition is underway. It's in process with KP Law, and we've been pretty hands-off, the committee's been pretty hands-off, only because we can't really be involved there, but from what I understand, Pioneer Valley Railroad has honored a price that was initially granted in 2018, that price being $340,000 for acquisition. We can stick with that, and I will actually go through funding below, but that was actually a pretty big step in the right direction, so happy that that's underway. Another big priority of the committee is finalizing an application for a new grant with Mass Trails that we can apply towards the future engineering and design fees. The highest of the, the highest amount of funds that we can seek is $300,000, with the due date February 1st, so we have a draft prepared. We did submit it to the Ad Hoc Committee, it's ready for review, and we hope to have that in well, well ahead of schedule, so that's looking pretty good, I think. And we're also excited to start the request for proposal process for available vendors. So when we actually can get through the acquisition phase and get folks out to examine, review, and actually start doing some, some drawings for the design, we can actually get that underway as quickly as possible. One final priority within the committee is just to establish some communication outlet. We don't actually have anything in place for sharing progress with the residents, the general public, and we're hoping to do so, of course, with no cost, no maintenance fees, and something that's value-added but does not lead to just anything off the, off the topic of sharing the status of the project, really, to leave it at that. Okay, so budget. We actually have a series of grants that have been awarded within the last year or two, so we've been chugging right along. First is a $100,000 grant from Mass Small Town Housing Choice that was awarded in March of 2021. The next was awarded over the summer, August 2021, also from Mass Trails, that was an additional $100,000. Both of those are being applied towards acquisition. And then over the summer, we actually felt like there was a win with the debt exclusion being approved from the town after it went to town vote. Good news about that is it sounds like it could potentially be rescinded with enough grant funds and the addition of CPA funds from the budget to actually keep the onus off the residents. So CPA funds, Community Preservation Funds, there was approval as of last month from town meeting to transfer $270,000 towards acquisition and, and design if there is available funding. So that was actually great, and that was thanks to a bill, I think, maybe pushed by State Rep Sabadosa. And then, again, just that potential grant that we will know about next year from Mass Trails, we'll submit by February, and I believe the determination, determination comes 150 days after the due date, so we're thinking mid to late summer. We'll hear back on, on something, if anything. Personnel, the committee currently has seven volunteers. I am the chair. I became chair just in April of 2021. And then plans for the next six months, this is a bit of a review, but again, the Mass Trails grant application that we want to have submitted by the end of the month. Following up on acquisition, just to make sure that nothing's missed, but also to make sure that we know as soon as we can to continue out the next big steps. And working on the RFP for design and engineering folks. And then, let's see, long-term issues and plans for your consideration. So the top priority here, this is something that I don't know a lot about admittedly, but expect to have additional conversation about it in the future, is just capitalizing on the Mass DOT construction funds. So as far as I understand, Southampton is, is on the tip sheet, the Transportation Improvement Program for FY '24, so really less than, than two years away. The state has roughly $6 million allocated for construction of, of the project. So that said, the committee just really doesn't want to drag our feet, we don't want any administrative time lost, we want to make sure we're, we're ready to go, we have designs on hand, we have permitting, we have everything we needed to, to make sure shovels can hit the dirt on time. So we're actually, we're establishing a schedule and just trying to make sure we don't actually miss any pieces along the way. Also, not something that needs to be answered now, but I do not have a Mass DOT contact personally. I assume someone, somewhere does have some contact, so I'll probably be asking you about that soon, just to make sure we have what they need at a certain timeframe, just to capitalize on those funds. Also, just another consideration, maintenance repairs, improvements of a Greenway after it's implemented. What I do not know is what the town is capable of managing, or if there's going to be a line item in the budget for things like trees and limbs falling, fence repairs, emergency repairs, things like that. We have done some, some digging with nearby communities, East Hampton, Westfield, et cetera. They estimate maybe $1,000 to $2,500 annually for repairs and improvements, things like that, on their existing pathways. So again, just something to keep in mind for, for the future. Last important piece, I call Phase 2, and I like to bring it up, although we're potentially putting the cart before the horse, but Phase 2 will actually complete the gap. So even with this initial three and a half mile corridor, or first phase, Southampton does not actually have a complete path from end to end, and there will still be, I forget the distance, maybe it's a mile or two, between the connection to Route, Route 10 and where Westfield is running their existing pathway to. So Phase 2, we are planning to still push, seek funding, and do all the planning we can to make sure that we completely fill the gap to travel further north and further south around Southampton. Let's see, suggested tools and resources to help out. One thing, again, these are not high priorities at the moment, but have been in mind, one thing is that we have heard details about a 501(c)(3), a nonprofit fundraising resource, essentially, for, for collecting and holding funds. We don't actually have folks on the committee or in the circle that we can actually get confirmations from, and I had kind of hoped there would be some details within the town that, that had information on an account or something. This is of interest to us, because if we can generate some fundraising horsepower and get donations, we'll use that for signage, improvements, whatever we may be able to, but we don't have the personal contact information of anyone who maybe has worked on this in the past. That's kind of an open-ended question. If anyone has details, if you could share that with me, with us, that would be excellent. One other suggestion is just more updates, whether or not we can get any kind of rough outline or estimation from KP Law for details on the acquisition. That would be helpful, only because I think the last item I had was creating some sort of schedule that would allow us to, to work backwards, to identify when to start the next tasks. So if they can estimate when acquisition either may be complete, or when we can move on with potentially accessing the land for an engineering firm, that would be helpful, and we're gonna try to populate a schedule like that as, as closely as possible.
Great.
I think that's all I have.
Yeah, and you put forth an idea of a schedule for the, the new grant, the design portion, right? This is what this is reflecting?
Yeah, that was, that was a great start, and I think we're gonna continue to add to that as, as we get details, and try to, like I said, work backwards, just so we know as soon as we can start something, you know, just so we don't miss any pieces leading forward towards FY '24.
Sure, no, that's great. Thanks, Aaron. That's, that's a lot of information, and I know Ed's certainly been the main contact with Kofman and Page, and we'll be in touch with them, and as we know anything in terms of the acquisition, that had been set out with various steps, kind of like this kind of chart in the original plan and application for the first Mass Trails grant, so we'll probably need to get an update from them in terms of where they are in the process, but hopefully things are moving smoothly. We haven't heard otherwise, but we'll definitely keep you informed of all that. I think, just two things from my point of view, the, the idea of having something in terms of sort of public education and getting, getting the town more aware and involved in, in the whole project, again, I think there was something way back when, and I think it's kind of come and gone, and probably needs to be rejuvenated somewhere, and I don't know offhand, was that all carried out on our website? Does anybody know how it was done before? I know there was a Friends, right, of the Greenway at some point in time?
I'm not aware of it.
Wasn't there?
Yeah, there was a Friends of the Greenway, correct.
So I thought, wasn't.
Which would be separate from the town.
Right, right, but that would be possibly the fundraising arm, and that.
Right.
Theoretically, whether that still exists, it may exist on paper, but in terms of its membership, I think it probably, certainly has not been active in years, and if anybody was on it, the only person I think.
I have some contacts, I'll check on.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe Tammy Walunis might have been on it at one point in time.
She's also contacted, I'm not sure.
Okay, so, yeah, so I think we can, we can find out who might have been on it in the past and pass on those information, that information to you. And then maybe whether it's, you know, just trying to have a separate, you know, separate webpage about the, about the bike path, you know, just a separate thing, might be a good thing to do, to, you know, be something that you can control and not let it go down a rapid hole in terms of whatever you want to be able to be said out there. But I think, you know, getting any kind of publicity and, and education out for the town in terms of what this is gonna mean, I think would be a, a great, great step forward.
Agreed, yeah. We hope to control it and not have to hassle, you know, someone like Ed, every time you want to share news, for him to go and make contacts for editing the website.
Right, yeah.
If it's something we control, I think that would be ideal, we can share good news as soon as it happens.
Yeah.
But I wasn't sure if there would be an additional cost, not that that's necessarily impossible, maybe just potentially avoidable, however, there's pros and cons with social media and things like that, whether or not we want that to be our primary news source. I think we're, we're still debating, I, I realize there's often more cons and pros, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever's manageable, inexpensive, but also value-added.
Sure, very good, yeah, okay. Any thoughts, questions?
No.
Yeah, really.
I've saved an email, and you mentioned about the, the money, that's the 6 million. I just wanted to mention that I'm having a little bit of difficulty with the, getting on the internet, I don't know why.
You unplugged it.
I unplugged it to put our computer in.
Oh, well, that explains it. Anyway, I have an email that I've saved all along, and it basically has the person, it talks about Southampton is still in line to get state and federal funding for 2025, which is the rehabilitation of East Street, and then it says 2022, Southampton Greenway Rail Trail Construction from Coleman Road to Route 10, 3.5 miles, and it's $6,080,722. And it says, you can view these documents on this particular website, and it says for, for ready communication, please direct all tip comments to andrewmccall@pvpc.org.
Okay.
Is that someone that you're familiar with at all?
I don't think I have that name. Can you spell the last name for me?
It's M.C. I can forward this email to you if you want to just write down your email for me, and I'll send this to you. But it has the link to the documents, and it also has the person to contact. Who is our MPO rep? Do you know?
John was the alternate. I'll have to go back and see who the actual main rep is.
Oh, you did?
From, oh, and, oh, okay.
From Andrew McCall?
McCall.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all right. All right, well, good. And I think, just to, just to say too, we have a draft of the, the application you all have been working on, so thanks for, for that. We've got it, and we're gonna have our Grant Committee meeting sometime next week, and so we'll send you a note when we're gonna schedule that and put you involved in that too, yeah. You want to come on up so we can?
Sorry to just add some. So the grant will require attachments. I think they're not gonna be any different than the last grant, and you may have a cleaner copy of that than we do, but just be aware that that's not in that material.
Sure, yeah.
If it's okay, I was gonna add a couple things.
Sure.
We did just hear from that Andrew McCall. When we get clarification from the lawyers, there's some additional steps of clarifying all the issues for the abutters and the issues of the rail banking by the railroad, that we were, getting a timeline for that would also be helpful.
There'll be, yeah, they'll put a timeline together for all of those steps.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, that's all gonna be done, yeah.
The one other piece is, as I've been doing research, the design phase may take longer than we want, just because of the requirements of the state Mass DOT. So one of the questions is how we need to make sure we don't lose the funding if it takes into 2025, and I wasn't sure if that, the Select Board and the town want to take the role in that, or they want us to take the role of it, but that maybe something needs to be explored if the design phase takes longer than.
Yeah, and I think we've run into that already. Ed has had communication with various grant programs over the last month, actually, as some of these, we may be bumping up against timelines and so forth, and generally, we, I think we've found that they, most of the program managers are pretty flexible.
Receptive.
And receptive to extending, but they want to wait until you're closer to the deadline to say, well, okay, we really are running into a problem here, and, you know, if we asked already for, for an extension for something, it would be way too early. We had that just recently. So, yeah, I think we, we would do that, and because the contracts get signed basically back here, I think this is why, Ed, you've signed the Mass Trails one, I believe, right? So that would be something that Ed would, would have to initiate with the state to apply for an extension, something like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, but there's usually some flexibility there, yeah, from our experience, okay? Good. Any questions? Francine, Joy, anything in particular?
I don't have any questions. Sounds like lots of good progress.
All right, good, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I really appreciate having the Greenway Committee back up and running, and thank you all for your energy and putting all the work into getting, getting an application going. All right, somebody needs to mute back there. back there. All right, thank you. Okay, moving on. We're going to do, just very quickly, we've got two or three appointments, and we've got people that have been sitting here, so I'm liking to do those, and then we'll move forward on a couple of other issues, okay?
Yep.
So we have an appointment for Cost Efficiency Ad-Hoc Committee, Robert Riggs. I guess I'll just go ahead and read that. I don't see Bob here that I know of. Robert Riggs, 88 Pleasant Street. He's applying to be on the Cost Efficiency Ad-Hoc Committee, which is great. This is one of our empty town slots that we've been hoping to get somebody. His background, from what he's saying here, he's self-employed in the automotive industry for 40-plus years, been principal manager of 80-plus employees, and has built and contracted multiple projects, including residential and commercial projects. So that's about what I know. So why don't we take that one separately? This is an appointment to the committee to expire November 30th, 2022. If you recall, as a new committee, we just set these up for a short period of time to get through November on any of them. So could I have a motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Robert Riggs, the Cost Efficiency Ad-Hoc Committee, term to expire November 30th, 2022.
Okay, can I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
I'll second.
All right, good. Roll call vote?
Lumbra, aye.
Dishman, aye.
Groden, aye.
Joy? Joy, are you there? Okay, Foulz, aye. We'll keep on moving. Four and one. Not catching her. Joy? She may have stepped away. So let's just say four positives, four in favor. Okay.
Yep.
All right, next. We have three appointments to the Public Safety Building Committee.
Any objection to do them as a package?
No, I think we could do them as a group, but people are here in the audience, so if they'd like to say something, that would be great. Yeah, go ahead, if you want to do this.
I'll make a motion to appoint Cindy Palmer to the Public Safety Building Committee, term to expire June 30th, 2023. To also appoint Sarah Stein, Public Safety Building Committee, term to expire June 30th, 2024, and Christina Mattson, Public Safety Building Committee, term to expire June 30th of 2022.
Okay. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
All right, Francine, second. Okay. Some discussion? Would anybody like to pop up? Cindy, come ahead. Yep.
Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. Thank you, that's great. I applied for two primary reasons. One is, I know I don't look it, but I'm going to represent the seniors. And also, I'm a member of the Friends of the Council on Aging and intend very much to keep them informed and the Council on Aging informed about the progress and to get feedback from them and representing seniors. Secondly, I feel very strongly that we need to really include town residents in understanding what's happening and also get input. This is going to require town residents to support something, whatever the cost is going to be. We know it's going to be expensive, and it is necessary. And I, for one, was in the police department. I met with the chief for another reason several weeks ago, and I just was appalled at the conditions we expect our public safety professionals to be under. I've been in the fire department as well. So that's just my general comment, that I think it's just an extremely valuable thing for our town. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Okay, Sarah, come on up.
Sarah Stein, Nine Cold Spring Road. I just wanted, I guess, to introduce myself. I've lived in town about almost six years. I'm on the planning board, and professionally, I work in construction management. I manage projects from a general contractor point of view that aren't that different from this project, well, potential project. So I have a lot of experience in value engineering, construction management, schedule development. I work for Daniel O'Connell Sons in Holyoke, and I've been with them about 10 years.
Great.
That's excellent.
So having that construction and engineering, you're an engineer by education, right?
Yes, civil and environmental engineering degrees.
Wonderful, great, wonderful. Thank you for stepping up. We really appreciate having somebody with those qualifications on the team, too. That's really very important. Thank you.
I have one question for you, if you don't mind. Just given where you're currently employed, are you, in your capacity there, do you foresee any conflict in the event that your firm bids on this project? Are you in a position at the firm to make decisions or things of that nature, or are you strictly on the project side?
I'm a project manager. I manage projects as assigned. I am not an executive deciding, like, I report to an executive who would make that decision. I think it would be a conflict if I was assigned to manage this project. In that case, I would have to make a decision, but I don't anticipate that.
Perfect, thank you.
Good, all right, thanks. Okay, anybody else? Christina?
Well, I spelled out in the application several of the reasons that I would like to be on this committee. And one thing I'll add is that when, during the last effort that did not pan out, when the site was chosen for here next to the town hall, the historical commission was called in, and I was pretty, we followed that and were involved in the fate of the schoolhouse there. So there are a few things that I would like to see going to go differently. One thing that didn't seem to take place with sufficient concern was cost, the awareness of cost and limiting it, sort of planning for and assessing what the townspeople would be willing to spend. And I think a lot of energy was expended having disregarded that and to no avail. And I think it's very important. And it seemed as though the architect that we were working with at that time was given free rein to produce a very beautiful building that was just unaffordable to the town. When he was invited back to a recent public safety meeting, he tossed out the figure of $14 million, and it just seemed like a non-starter to me. And I would like to see this committee now to be very methodical, very thoughtful, far-reaching to the community, and we need to make sure this effort works this time. So I would like to be a part of that.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. But I also will add, I was very impressed when you devised the new mission statement and the composition, that you really focused on putting together a very professional committee to see this through. And I will just say that if you can find 11 good members, and then there's a 12 that is more qualified than I, I would be very willing to step aside so a more qualified person could take my place.
Okay, thank you. All right, okay. Any questions from anyone? If not, could I have a roll call vote to approve all three candidates?
Lumbra, aye.
Groden, aye.
Aye for aye.
Francine?
At least we alternate, I guess.
Okay, we got her, yep, and Foulz, aye. Okay, unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you all for stepping up.
Yeah, no, thanks.
Your backgrounds are all very impressive.
Thank you all for stepping up.
Yep. Yep, you just have to mute again. There you go. Thank you. Good, thank you all for coming, and I appreciate your waiting to this point in the meeting. So thanks very much, and good luck as the committee gets going again. We're getting a few slots filled, so that's great. Thanks very much.
I'm chair, appointee, request order, like permission to go out of order, skip to signatures, and take up the four PCFs related to the fire department.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, all right.
The first being, take up as a package. The two PCFs related to Joseph Weiner and Sophie Morin as one packet.
Okay, these are the part-time firefighters, is that right?
Yeah, part-time, non-benefited firefighters at 1592 per hour to work as needed as they respond to calls.
Okay. Could I have a second first, and then we'll...? Yep?
I'm just trying to find them. I saw them online, so I'm just looking.
They were in the additional packet on the...
Yeah, I actually, oh, I see, yep, I got them.
Yep, they might be there. So there are two, Sophie Marini and Joseph Weiner, is that right? These are both part-time...
Just as paid as worked.
Right, okay. So if we could have a second to those, that motion?
Second.
Okay, so discussion. John, would you like to say a couple words?
Sure. No, I just appreciate it moving forward. And if, I'm just here, if you have any questions, if I can answer anything for you.
Okay, thank you, all right. All right, so these are pretty straightforward. I think we've done these before. If there's no discussion on the part-time firefighters, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Lumbra.
Those in favor?
We should read them, we should read them, right? Did we already...
We said their name.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yep, Sophie Marini and Joseph Weiner.
For part-time, non-benefited firefighter at a rate of 1592 per hour.
Yep, I'm sorry, yeah, we didn't put the amount in, 1592 an hour, correct. Okay, all right, anything else on that?
I just had a question, John. This came up before, not specific to these. Do you have any kind of rules around where people need to live if they're going to be on the on-call service?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, if they're, for a firefighter, they need to live within, like, five-mile radius. So, you know.
Thanks. All right, anything else?
Nope.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Could I have a roll call vote for all those in favor of those two?
Lumbra, aye.
Dishman, aye.
Groden, aye.
Groden, aye.
Foulz, aye, okay, fine.
Chair, next one I'd like to take up out of order is the PCF related to fire EMS minimum wage blanket submission. It's an adjustment for the firefighters that are currently at 13...
50, probably.
50 an hour, going to 1425 retro if hours worked, January 1st of 2022, in compliance with the federal minimum wage.
It's actually state.
State, state, I'm sorry.
It's voluntary to municipality, so it's not required.
Correct.
Yeah, this is a voluntary...
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. Any discussion, questions, thoughts on this one? So this is basically, just to recap, so this would be to bring any of the...
Minimum wage-based.
Minimum wage people that are, I believe we already brought them up to the 1350, so this would take them to another 75 cents to get them to the 1425.
Yeah, so if they're based on minimum wage, it would be, yes.
Yeah, for those that are at that minimum wage level, anybody that's above that, this doesn't apply to. Offhand, can you tell us how many people this applies to, offhand?
I don't know.
I'm thinking it was like four or five, is that...?
That's probably about right. There may be five or six now, especially with the new hires, we've added a couple, so.
So this would bring everybody up to the new state minimum wage that took effect as of January 1st this year.
And this is really, you'd have to be at the status of probationary firefighter in order to fall in this category.
Yep.
So once you're certified, you're up to that 1590, something number.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the 15 is with the base rate of that, and then added on when you have certain certifications in firefighting.
And this is available in your budget, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any questions from anybody?
Nope.
All right. If not, could we have a vote on this one to approve the minimum wage?
Lumbra, aye.
Groden, aye.
Joy? Joy? Go ahead, Randy.
Groden, aye.
Foulz, aye. Joy, are you there? Can't hear you, if you're there. Okay, Francine, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to clarify, we're saying 15, I'm sorry, 1425 for any, is the minimum wage for anyone, not just for these PCFs that we have before us today. I know we have to gather more paperwork from other departments who may have, departments who may have employees who fall below that mark, but we're generally voting to increase the minimum wage in town to 14 and a quarter an hour, correct?
No.
I'm voting for these PCFs only, but I support it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Francine, so that question came up, this vote specifically is the fire department, but I, Chris brought that to my attention. So as the acting chair of the PPPB, I'm going to reach out to the other three departments and share the form and the process that John used to get a blanket approval through for this purpose only, and I expect to have those through PPPB by the January 20th meeting to get it all done.
And it's election, library, and COA, right?
Library substitutes, election workers I know of. I don't know about the COA, but I'm actually going to ask Gen Day to run a list of anyone that's currently making a 1425.
Yeah, so theoretically, yes, Francine, we're in support of this, but for tonight, we're only dealing with the fire department.
Understood, okay.
Okay, thank you.
And then lastly, I'd like to go out of order and take up the PCF proposal from the fire chief.
Did we vote?
Oh.
Yes, we did.
Okay, sorry about that.
Proposal from the fire chief for mid-year hourly rate adjustment to the pay scale for EMTs and paramedics. This one takes a little bit more explanation. The chief can feel free to correct me if I go astray here. But this is as a result of the special town meeting with the transfer of the $25,000 of ambulance receipt funds into his operating budget, and feeling the need to increase the entry level for paramedics by a dollar and paramedics by $3. The, I will just, the chief is asking for this to be with an effective date of 1215, 2021. The PPPB took no position on the effective date. We just focused on the pay scales that were proposed. In the packet, you should have what was currently in place, and up on top it says as of 7/20/21, showing the paramedic at 2029. And then the revised form, which shows paramedics starting at 2329. And you'll note that he's, it still covers the same 21-year span, but it's spread out in multiple steps to have a broad, more flexibility when recruiting somebody that may have, they may have four years, and just adjustments to it. It's still, the starting points are the same. So I'll just stay with the paramedics because then it falls through online. You've got 2329, maxing out at 2821 would be the new version, and down, that's adding $3 to the 2029, and then following that scale forward. Independently, the fire chief submitted multiple wage samplings from similar and/or abutting jurisdictions on what they had for pays, which led him to his $3, $1 recommendation. Independently of that, the, as chair PPP, I did a wage study of the greater Springfield area, and that's attached as well, the paramedic slash the emergence, or the EMT. And it shows that his recommendation for the paramedic puts us in the 50 to 90 percentile, 50 to 90, so we're starting at the median. And on the EMTs, it's on the 25 to 75 percentile. And we questioned on that, it was the chief's intent to drive EMTs and encourage them to go the extra step to become the paramedics, because that's where his most dire need is, is at the paramedic level.
That's correct.
The only other change is, on the initial, is changing the duty officer coverage from $25 per day to $50 per day. And that only applies when the chief is out of state or on vacation.
That's correct.
And being the person filling in for him. And they don't have to sit in the station, but they have to be within 01073 and available on those days to respond to things. We did ask, just for clarification, to add language on the holiday pay, that holiday pay at one and a half is only for hours actually worked, so that if you're an on-call firefighter and there's a fire on Christmas Day and you respond, during that response period, you'll be paid time and a half on Christmas Day. But if you're sitting at home, you're not getting paid anything for that holiday. So it's only if you're actually called in to work on that day, it would be a time and a half. And I'll stop there.
Yeah, just go back over the duty coverage again. What have we been doing?
It was 25, the old schedule was $25 per day.
And who was usually getting that?
It varied between the officers. So it wouldn't just fall on one person. It's basically incentive, gives incentive to the officers to pick up shifts and to, so if I'm out for a week, it wouldn't just be one person, it might be all five officers. They would all have an opportunity, and they usually split it between them. They would all have an opportunity, and they usually split it between them.
So that's per day, not per shift?
Correct, that's per day, so that they...
Twenty-four hours, right?
Yeah, twenty-four hours. So if any call comes in, if any question comes in, they're here in town to respond to any incident that needs administrative...
Roughly two dollars an hour. Make themselves available for the twenty-four hours.
So they're available twenty-four hours, not three eight-hour shifts?
Right.
Right, and it would only be the time...
Fifty dollars covers the day.
Right, and it would only be the time that the fire, correct, fifty dollars for one calendar day.
Twenty-four hour day.
Yep.
Can I ask another question?
Go ahead.
Do we have any estimate of, not this, but looking, rolling this whole thing up with the increases, you know, what the impact is? What does that add up to?
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
What it's going to cost?
Yeah, I don't have hard numbers, but I do know that the estimates that I had done originally for the additional three dollars an hour to paramedic came out to thirty thousand, but that was with every shift at a paramedic level. We've already had a couple of holes, so anytime that there's a hole or if there's a shift where there's a basics on, there's a reduction in how much we spend. So I believe that we, there's, with the money that was allocated from town meeting, we should not have any problem to stay within budget. And honestly, looking at it, this is not a guarantee that we're going to have coverage. It's really just to retain people, to incentive, give incentive to folks and to hire new folks to come in. And by the end of the day, it'll make the response level better, but I also don't think we're going to spend all the money that we have in the budget currently for wages just because, in a perfect world, we might. The world is never perfect. We're doing the best that we can. I just didn't want to have to go back to town meeting or go back for money at a later date. So I'm confident with the money that we have now and the proposed upgrades.
Let me take a shot at it for you, because...
Sure, thank you.
When Chris was in my office earlier today, I ran two different scenarios, and I based it on one hundred and eighty-two days, six months roughly, thinking January first to June thirtieth. In a perfect world, if you staffed every shift with one EMT and one paramedic, that came out to seventeen thousand dollars and some change. In an imperfect world, if you had to staff every shift with both paramedics, it came out to twenty-six thousand and some change. Theoretically, it should fall somewhere in between, so my guess is probably somewhere around twenty-one thousand dollars. So I hope that will help you out with your question, Francine.
Okay, thank you.
So that twenty-one thousand, yeah, would be for the, for the extra that would be...
For the differential.
For the differential, right.
Correctly.
Because again, I mean, I think the argument you made to us a few meetings ago, right, John, was that the difficulty in recruiting and retaining qualified people, especially the paramedics, so this would essentially allow you to get somebody more, a paramedic at a three-dollar a rate.
Yeah, be competitive. Because even though we're at the lower end of the scale still, I think we have a great department. It's a good team that works together well. And I think, I'm hoping that we're going to recruit some folks in and keep folks that are here.
Right, but the goal is not to be, I mean, if I'm understanding, we got this letter from the mayor of East Hampton recently about us having to sort of farm out some of our calls to them because we weren't adequately staffed, right? And that was because, correct me if I'm wrong, we only had maybe two EMTs on and not a paramedic on? Is that right?
Well, there's just, because it's all part-time, and I'm the only full-time there. So we fill the schedule, and the schedule is generally pretty well set for, for all shifts. More recently, the last, you know, six months, it's been an increasing challenge to find folks who can fill all the shifts. And as I stood here before, it's due in fact because there's a shortage of paramedics. I've lost some due to injury, military service, other things that have gone on. And so when I tried to recruit people, I couldn't recruit anyone because our wages were so dramatically lower than all the rest.
So with this three-dollar and one-dollar incremental change, my understanding is your goal is to have every shift, if possible, with one, the ideal is one paramedic and one EMT?
That's the ideal.
Right, but at least one shift a day, at least should have a paramedic and an EMT?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I mean, the goal is to, is to provide paramedic-level service.
Okay. And I guess, as we said, I think at an earlier meeting, we don't really know until we try it to see if this helps, but hopefully...
Yeah.
All indications are that, at least in my mind, is a good portion of competitive wage. I actually went through it, and the second community I worked with and the same type of thing. The ambulance department was separate from the Fire Department, but had, actually had a couple of full-time people on it, but then they relied on individuals that had full-time jobs, whether it was for other communities or for private ambulance services. And we found the same thing if you, because these people have a choice. And, you know, if they're not working in their own community for overtime and want to plan on something, they can choose the community where they're going to get a more decent wage. And we had to adjust our, our scale at the time. And at the time, it was, they allowed two separate certifications for EMTs, so actually had bumped three different levels. And once we did that, we did find that it was much easier to fill those shifts and find help. So I definitely think the chief is on the right track here. And if you, actually, there's a thick packet, or fairly thick packet in, in your packets that, from the information Chief Workin had sent me, I just went through it and took the, the months from January through December, the day shifts and night shifts, and took his color coding, because I can't print in color, and actually wrote on those monthly sheets of whether, if there was a shift that either didn't, there was short staffing, they didn't have a medic on them, or there was no staffing. And there was a little issue, not bad at the beginning of the year. Around May of twenty-twenty-one, there was a considerable jump in the shifts that weren't being staffed. And from May to December, you can see, you know, of those shifts that that issue increased. And I really believe that a good, good portion of that is individuals. There is a shortage of paramedics, but they have a choice, and they may be working, but they're actually choosing to work somewhere else where they make a few more dollars an hour.
Right. And looking at this, I mean, October looked like it was like, whatever happened in October was like the worst month possible in terms of...
I don't sleep well at night when, when that shift isn't filled. And so this is really the, the best effort that I think we can make with the resources that we have to really combat the problem.
And I guess, I'm understa, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but my, my hope will be that with this adjustment that we're approving, assuming we approve it tonight, that this will allow you to recruit and retain more qualified people and at the same time, respond more, more readily, more frequently to calls ourselves rather than having to call in East Hampton or some other neighboring ambulance and thus lose that revenue. So somewhere that, that retaining a revenue or gaining a revenue, I'm hoping will kind of help be awash with the increase in...
That's, that's the intent of it. I just, I wouldn't want to stand up here and say it's a guarantee.
That's my thinking on that.
Yeah, yeah, the intent is that we cover with, with the Southampton ambulance for all of our calls because it's really the best response that we can give someone because time is of essence in an emergency.
Okay.
So I think, I think after going, I mean, this, this, it seems like this has been a long process, and I'm, I'm sure everybody feels that way. But I, you know, I said this last night in the meeting, and I'll say it here tonight, after going through the process and seeing the actual documents and seeing the old wage scale, the new wage scale, and having the conversation through it, I'm very comfortable supporting the wage scale that's there. And I do that based on the fact that there was a prior vote in town that mandated twenty-four-seven ambulance service. And seeing the wage study and seeing that it's comparable and in line with other things, I think it's very reasonable. I think we still have a long ways to go in a, like any other department here in town, getting them to be fully funded and operational the way the taxpayers believe it's happening. And I think we need to have more conversations and discussions on that, but I'm, I'm comfortable with the way you say, and I will defer to the remainder of the board on what action, if any, to take on the effective date. Either leave it as presented or adjust.
Is there a particular rationale for the mid-December date?
Yeah, I think that the town meeting really helped to validate the crew just because it did feel like it wasn't just the chief, you know, getting up in front and, and it was more than just the chief supporting them. It was really the town that supported them. And they started to step up with that. And I believe that it's, it's a lot of work. We're asking a lot from, from the group. And this is a group that's stuck with us. This is a group that, you know, didn't bail when we were the lowest paid in the area. And so I, I believe from when the town meeting validated the concerns that I had and the process that I'm trying to move forward with, it's appropriate then to date it after that town meeting vote with the feelings of the group that they're worthwhile to this town. I'd like to show them that.
I'm fine with that.
Any thoughts, discussion, Francine or Joy? Any comments about that, or rationale? No? Okay.
So just...
No.
Okay, yeah.
One, to the best of your knowledge, John, has anybody worked a shift between December fifteenth and today that is no longer employed?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Because what I wouldn't want is to approve a retro when somebody who's no longer committed to the service getting a check.
Yeah, no, I haven't had any one that I've pulled from roster in that timeframe.
Okay. Okay, so with that, I honestly forget, do we have a motion on the table?
No, you do not.
Just discussion, all right. Let's have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the increases to three dollars for paramedic and one dollar for basic EMS.
Does that include approving the modified, the updated pay scale?
Retroactive to twelve fifteen, twenty-one, and also, I believe, the deputy increase from twenty-five to fifty per twenty-four-hour shift.
Duty officer.
Duty officer.
Duty officer.
Duty officer, yeah, okay.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Lumbras, aye.
Dushman, aye.
Paper, aye.
Groden, aye.
Saul's aye. Okay.
Wonderful.
Very good.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, take care.
Appreciate it.
John, is that your stuff there?
Yep. Oh, somebody left something.
It's a good thing it's on airport.
Somebody left their phone. Anybody who was in here that was...
Bob.
Yeah, Bob or Cindy, anybody, maybe? Your phone is here, if not. Okay, all right, we'll keep on moving on. Thank you very much for this. Next item on the agenda is Town Administrator's Report. Ed, please. Go back to our agenda here.
Just a second. Forgot to add that vote.
Yep.
All right. All right. Updates. We have received our first revenues, which are from the local sales tax for the adult cannabis retail sales from Dreamers. But just to let you know, that is reflected in our current revenue report. But we will also, in addition to the sales tax revenue, be receiving three percent from the total sales of this retail operation from the community host agreement that the Select Board agreed to, and also a ten-thousand-dollar community benefit payment to go towards programs for substance abuse prevention from Vulcan LLC. The community impact fees, as per the agreement, are to be used for road and other infrastructure systems, law enforcement, fire protection services, inspectional services, and public health and addiction services. Let's see. I did make a proposal to the Personal Policy and Procedure Board at their meeting last night as to recommending some changes to the town sick leave portion of the rules and regulations. They were amendable. I will be drafting some possible changes to the vacation leave to present at their next meeting on January twentieth. I have also asked them to include the addition of the Juneteenth holiday as a town holiday in the holiday section. I have attached that recommendation to this report. For your reference, the recommended changes are in bold, italic, and underlined. And I'll just, the first change was in section thirteen point two under full and part-time employees, full-time employees. At the commencement of each fiscal year, each employee having six months of continuous service shall be credited with five days of sick leave. This next sentence is the one that I did recommend adding. Sick leave for new employees shall be allowed to accrue from their start date according to the below schedule and may utilize a sick time accrued once they have earned it. Goes back to original sentence, employees with less than six months of service shall be provided sick leave in accordance with the following schedule. Months of service, zero to one, days allowed, zero. One to two, one day. Two to three months, two days. Three to four months, three days. Four to five months, four days. And five to six, five days. Thirteen three, just so I clarify, says part-time employees, regular set schedule of at least twenty hours per week. Part-time employees shall receive sick leave on the same basis as full-time employees, provided however that such leave shall not, shall be prorated according to the number of hours or days of work per full-time week such, such employees required to perform. So that change would also apply to them. And then in thirteen point, or dash five, use of sick leave, the original portion said, sick leave shall be granted to an employee only when the employee is incapacitated from the performance of duties by personal sickness, injury, or quarantined by public health authorities. Injury, illness, or disability self-imposed or resulting from the use of alcohol or drugs may not be considered proper claim for leave under this section. See thirteen point seven. I also added this clause, or recommended added in this clause, employees may also use their sick leave to care for their minor child who is ill. And, and that was the only two changes that I had recommended to the PPP on the sick leave. Next, the Edwards Library boiler has been installed. The only item remaining to complete this project is, the vendor is waiting for the installation for the new water pipes. They expect that it will be received either this week or next, or next. And once they receive it, they will call to schedule its installation. So the new boiler is up and running. Bradley Oxon, Ellen Krucheck, and I had a Zoom meeting with Lisa Kelly from Eric Kincher of CPA this afternoon to organize the start of their work to help close out the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one financial books. We will have to arrange for her to have remote access to Softwrite and DLS, which she will be starting on the work immediately. And then I have made some recommendations to Joan Linehan, Director of the Council on Aging, for the safe operation of the Senior Center due to the increase in COVID-nineteen positive cases. These recommendations will go through the end of January twenty-twenty-two. I have attached a copy of those recommendations to my report for your information, and I'll read them to you. Southampton COA operations for January twenty-twenty-two. COA shall be open during its usual hours. Masks are required to be worn. No food or beverages shall be given out in the Senior Center. No food or beverages may be brought into the Senior Center. Social distancing of six feet shall be practiced. All programs that may be offered with full participation with Zoom shall be done through Zoom. On-site programs that may be offered shall require masks to be worn and social distancing of six feet to be practiced. of six feet to be practiced. Everyone must sign in for contact tracing. And then no large events of over 20 people shall be held in the senior center through January 31st. And then upcoming Select Board meetings in January, the 18th. Select Board meetings February, to be determined. I will let the Select Board members know that we will need a meeting for executive session for union negotiations next Tuesday, the 11th.
Is it going to be 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock, unless you want me to change it to a different time.
All right, thank you very much. Any comments or questions, Ed?
One question, Ed. Under the host community, that $10,000 is a quarterly payment, right? That's going to?
$10,000 is an annual payment. The others, and thanks to Chris for asking me to pull that out, because I had forgot the others are supposedly quarterly payments.
So it's an annual payment for five years?
Annual payment for five years. This agreement is good for five years, correct?
For the $10,000, but then 3% for?
Well, that's, the whole agreement is for five years, so, yeah.
Right.
So at the end of five years, we will need to negotiate a new contract?
So my question is?
Or agreement, I should say.
Right, so my question is, because I wasn't here, I wasn't on the Select Board at that time, so is that $10,000, it's been received, so is it sitting in the general fund and just going to close out as free cash, or is there a separate fund that's already been accounted for?
We will set up a separate fund for it, so.
We haven't done it yet.
Yeah, we have not yet.
It hasn't been?
We have not received it yet.
Yeah.
I'm working with them now to get the payments.
You have $4,600 right now.
Yeah.
That's just from the sales tax.
That's the sale tax. On the revenue report for $4,600, on the revenue, that is just the sales tax portion of this. So the 3% is the first quarterly payment that we've received. Is that, I'm sorry, it's not the first quarterly, we're due a quarterly payment, I'm sorry.
Right, so we will get 3% of their, shall we say, sales for 2021.
Right.
At the time that this was set up?
And that will put in a separate account also.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I think at the time that it was set up, we did discuss lots of ways that the money could be used. Obviously, the impact, you know, whether or not the police or any other service in town has had to increase their service because of this. I think we should explore that. But also, we talked about, you know, the Cooley Dickinson Urgent Care is right across the street in terms of education. We have a daycare that some people, particularly online, have voiced some concern about. That might be an opportunity for education of parents there, and also, obviously, the schools, the Board of Health. So we talked about a lot of ways of doing education about underage use of cannabis.
Right.
Yeah, my concern was only that it not, if it sits in the general fund for too long, it will, it won't disappear, it'll become free cash, and three years from now, someone's going to say, where's that money?
Yeah, no, this needs to be segregated.
Yeah.
Definitely.
It will be.
Yeah. And I think, you know, once we get to a point, maybe when we get our, either the annual payment or the next, the real quarterly payment or whatever, we can start maybe having a discussion about, you know, where it might be able to be used and who would be the most, you know, likely shepherd of those funds.
Is it possible for you to ask at a department head meeting, to have a discussion with department heads around any impact? I mean, I mean, we've had?
Yeah, we had the conversation with Chris today. We actually have to do an annual report on the impact, so.
Okay.
Basically, I would reach out to police, fire, inspectional services, which are both building, and Board of Health.
Yeah.
And highway for roads. We did not list anything for schools in there. It was basically what would the impact be to, yeah, the municipal infrastructure or services, so, yeah.
Okay. So once, a little bit later on the line, we'll get going when we have to get ready for a report and get that information from the various department heads. But that's nice to see that that's starting to come in, so that's good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Added to the pending item, I'm kidding.
Any other questions for Ed on his report?
And just to let you all know that in when, did the revenue estimates for fiscal year 22, because they actually weren't open yet and didn't know how much they'd bring in, none of the revenue was actually accounted for in the revenue estimate, so. I think it's good, you know, it's not going to be a windfall like.
Right.
It's one that opened right at the beginning, but, I mean, it'll be additional revenues that we.
But it's got to be used, you know, dedicated uses, it can't, you know.
We can use it for anything we want.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
It's what the contract says.
The agreement says we make a good faith effort to use it into those particular areas.
Into those areas, exactly. So it's not, it's not quite, you know, the Biggie Bank.
No.
Okay. All right, if no other questions, can we move on to some Select Board reports? Anybody have anything? Maybe John will start with you and we'll.
So the PPP met last night. We've covered some of the items already, we're going to cover the rest of them. The only thing that we covered that really isn't going to come up.
Somebody, we need to mute either Joy or Francine, please, thank you.
Is that we did hear Ed's suggestions on the sick leave. Our treasurer-collector was there and at Ed's request had done some research on how easy or difficult it would be to implement an accrual system within the payroll. That led to some more conversation, so I think there's going to be a little tweak in the prorated section of that paragraph that Jennifer was going to, Jennifer and Ed were going to work on that paragraph piece to come back to us on the 20th. In addition to the vacation, June 19th, and there's a wording change that the treasurer-collector suggested related to the disability, short-term disability.
Yes.
The current wording makes it sound like it applies to even non-benefited employees. So we're going to take that up, have one more meeting on the 20th, and then look to schedule the public hearing on that and get it, get the whole thing back, that whole section back to the Select Board for hopeful approval.
Adoption.
Versus waiting for this whole process. We're going to start chipping away at these things.
Right, yeah. And you'll have a chance, Ed, if I'm understanding, you'll have a chance to draft something for the vacation.
Yes.
Portion of that, and we'd have a chance to actually see that at our next meeting before PQB meets, right?
No, they will meet, let's see.
We'll meet the 18th.
I'm trying to think, yes, you will, you're correct.
We'll have a chance to sort of see what that's like, even as you guys are getting ready to meet, so that's good, that's, timing works, okay.
And then Finance has not met, Hampshire Regional met last night, and the important, I think, the important thing that came out of that was their first-round draft budget for Hampshire Regional. I shared that with Ed as well as the narrative. Budgets, I think the first round is always high, or at least I hope it's high, and will come down, because right now it's a 4.73% increase for Hampshire Regional. I meant today to apply our calculations to see what that would actually do to our number, but I didn't get to it. So I just, Ed has the information if I may.
I'll send it out, I just didn't get a chance today.
It was a late night last night. And then, I believe that's it for my committee.
It was a long packed day today.
Sounds like it. Okay, how about Francine, any committee report?
I don't have any, but I did have a question for John on the personnel changes. And what is exactly the sequencing? You're going to have a public hearing on it before it goes to the Select Board, or does the Select Board get to look at a draft before it goes to a public hearing?
My understanding of the process is PPP meets, and once they finalize it, they hold a public hearing, and then the results of that public hearing are forwarded to the Select Board. But when we post for the meet, for the public hearing, I guess the Select Board would see it all ahead of time. We could spread, we could delay to provide it and then seek feedback before the public hearing.
Well, again, we'll have the vacation thing on the 18th, for our 18th meeting, and if PQB is meeting on the 20th.
Yes.
To discuss the vacation part of it, that would still be in sequence to then do the public hearing and then come back to us for final sign-off, right? Is that what you're asking, Francine?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I just would like to see it so we're not ending up at odds, we've had some input into the process before it goes out, but, you know, I'll defer to, I'll defer to the group. I know under the bylaw model, I don't know that that's how it has to be done, but how it's been done is what goes before the Select Board. They make their recommendations, and then it goes out for a public hearing, and then it comes back finally with that input of the public into the final document, and then final approval for a warrant article by the Select Board that onto town meeting and the lawyers and all the other things.
This, no, it does not go to town meeting.
Well, I think, I think.
It does not go to town meeting, Francine.
Yeah, this one won't.
This is rules and regulations.
This one won't have to go to town meeting, apparently, Francine, but.
No, I understand it won't, but I'm just, I'm just.
Giving the example of what happens with bylaws, right?
Well, understanding that too, we could also coordinate the schedule so that the committee sends it as a written communication and enough, and post our meeting after a Board of Select Board meeting so that feedback can be brought in at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what everybody wants.
Well, I also have a radical opinion.
Yes.
That actually, under the process that's spelled out, PPP makes their recommendations, they have a public hearing, they take those into comment, they send it along to the Select Board. My opinion is that the Select Board has the ability, once they review it at that meeting, to not only adopt anything or deny anything, to make any changes they would like to that document, so.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay. All right, well, as long as we have chances for some level of input, I think that's your main concern, it's a matter of where it fits in the sequence of things. Okay, all right, fair enough. Okay, any committee reports, Francine, from you?
None, the elected committee?
No, I have none, other than say that the bylaws committee is meeting tomorrow morning at 10:30 by Zoom.
Yep, okay. Thank you. And Joy, do you have any meetings?
I do, and I apologize, my video's off, just to, so I can hear you guys better with my internet. Conservation Commission met last night via Zoom. They voted to appoint a new member of the commission, and hopefully she will be able to come to the next meeting. They were wondering, Kathleen Haley, they were wondering if she needs to be present for the Select Board to appoint her or to be voted in, or she, she does know that she has to, if she is voted by the Select Board to be appointed, that she needs to go in and do this swearing-in with the town clerk, but she was just wondering for the actual Select Board meeting if she could join telephonically or virtually.
Yeah, there's no requirement for somebody to be here to be appointed. It's just been a courtesy, if people want to come in and introduce themselves and make themselves known personally, so it's not a requirement that she be here to have herself appointed, she just needs to put in the necessary paperwork.
Okay, I will let her, I will let her know. The Treasurer for Conservation Commission was like an update on where the town is with the accounting firm, because he would like to communicate with them about closing their books, so if he could be in, if we could coordinate a correspondence between him or if that's even feasible, or with the, with the town accountant. Ed, what would be the best means for him to do that?
Well, let me jump in, because I think Ed answered that already. He's had, he had a call this morning with the CPA firm that's going to be working on closing our books for '21, and they're starting immediately. They've dedicated a staff person to come and work with Bradley and get in here and have remote access, as well as come in if they need to, I gather, if they.
Well, most, just about all of it will be done remotely.
Mostly remote, so he'll be working, this person will, it's a Lisa somebody, I'm sorry?
Lisa Kelly.
Lisa Kelly will be the person working with, with the accountant and having access to the '21 accounts, and they'll, she'll be working on that for this month. So I think we need to let her get her work done, and hopefully, one of those things that we will have is going to be, obviously, the ending balances for various revolving funds accounts and starting balances for FY '22, among other things. So I think if they could be patient a little bit longer, since we've got this person on board, we want to get her working and focused on the things that she's got to get done per different timelines.
And those particular revolving funds, we actually went over some of that today so that she knew, she asked if there was any particular issues with any of them, and I did tell her that Conservation Treasurer had some issues with those, so she knows that she will have to talk with Art when she's doing those.
And once we get to that point where she's ready to handle.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
No, I really appreciate that update for them. And last, for Conservation Commission, there was just, the compliance monitor may not have been there while they were taking down the East Street Bridge, which was required by the conditions, but I believe there were pictures taken during that time. So they just wanted to make sure that they were following the order of conditions for the East Street Bridge, but it sounds like there were pictures taken, so it wasn't that much of a concern. And Housing Authority also did meet last night, and the biggest thing that they wanted to bring up with the Select Board was there's a DLTA grant coming up for, we can apply, the Select Board would have to apply on behalf of the town, because the Select Board would have to be in charge of the, any housing trust that's established. So this grant would help create, or pay someone to help come in, someone from PVC, PVPC or CDC Valley, to come in and help the towns, or help Select Board set up a housing trust. And, and the Housing Authority would really like to see Select Board move forward with this. So it was also something that I was going to bring up with the Grant Committee, the Ad-Hoc Grant Committee, but I want to do so with the, with the approval of the Select Board in moving forward with any grants to pursue a housing trust.
This would be one of those typical DLTA's that are like $20,000 or something like that?
Yeah, I don't even, I don't even view them as grants, but, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, it's where they, you know, yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, I think certainly if we have a way to be able to move forward, and if that's something that PVPC is interested in helping out to do, if that's something that's in their bailiwick of helping out with, I think we've been successful with several DLTA grants, so that's not too big an issue. I think we would, from the, I'll put my Grant Committee hat on, we would want the Housing Committee to give us some basic innards of, you know, the letter and whatever else has to go to PVPC in terms of what they want to be done, so I think we.
Absolutely, and I think one of the Housing Authority members was planning on attending the next Ad-Hoc Committee meeting to also, you know, bring this up to them and become a liaison between the Housing Committee and the Grant Committees to help work on this, so.
Sure, sounds good.
As long as the Select Board's okay with moving forward with it, then, then I'll see, I'll see to it that it gets every, all the parts are in place.
Okay, anybody have any objections to that idea? No?
No.
I'm seeing everybody shaking their heads no, so I think we're fine, Joy. Yep.
And, and both, the Conservation Commission is meeting again on February 7th via Zoom, and Housing Authority is meeting also again on February 7th via Zoom, both at 6 o'clock PM. And that's all I have.
All right, very good. Okay, reading?
CBC is setting up a meeting for either the 12th or the 19th, hasn't been confirmed yet, hasn't met in a while. Council on Aging meets tomorrow. Public Safety Complex is also working on setting up a meeting, especially once the committee is sort of reconfigured, probably the end of the month. And then Board of Assessors has been meeting every two weeks, including yesterday. Kudos to this committee, in the absence of a permanent principal assessor, April, Darcy, and Dave are doing a great job doing the work of the office. They are in the process of trying to recruit a principal assessor, have not had a lot of success with it being posted on, indeed is relooking at what they can do. They've been working on the budget worksheet for FY '23, and they'll be meeting again in two weeks.
Okay, great. Okay, and I think from my point of view, the only thing that's happened is the Ad-Hoc Grant, Tech, Ad-Hoc Grant Committee will be meeting next week, Wednesday, I believe. We're going to try and meet Wednesday afternoon, and we've got the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update Task first and foremost, and then as well the draft that the Greenway Committee has done for the Mass Trails Grant Design Work, so we've got a couple of things to review, and then obviously what Joy just mentioned with a liaison with the Housing Trust as well. So we may have a busy agenda for that meeting. And then that's basically, the Tech Committee is in a bit of a hiatus, they've had.
Monday, the 10th.
Sorry?
Dan sent out an invitation for Monday, the 10th.
Monday, the 10th, okay. So there will be a Tech Committee meeting on Monday, the 10th, thank you very much. We've had the former chairman, Mike Yeager, has put in his resignation. He's unfortunately got several family issues he's got to deal with, and is just finding if this is really time-consuming, so Dan LaValle is taking over the lead again for the moment, just to get it, keep it on track, okay? So that's all we are with committees.
Can I just have one more thing? I know Kate mentioned it when she spoke during the public comment session, but just to remind everyone, if you're interested, the Board of Health is meeting on Monday, January 10th at 5 o'clock.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, so with that, let's move on. Old business, audit update. Ed, give us some good news, please.
Bradley and I worked on this the week between Christmas and New Year's, and we believe we have responded to all. and we believe we have responded to all of Melanson's questions. We did also, along with sending those responses to what I had on my list for open items, we did also send the three individuals that were working on this, an email asking, asking them if for any reason we had missed anything to, and it was, there was something still outstanding we didn't know about to let us know, and we would respond immediately. So to the best of our knowledge at this point in time, we have sent everything back to them that
Great.
we are aware of that they were looking for.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. All right, E Street Bridge update.
You know, still moving along. The old bridge is, has now been removed, and they are, you know, working on the pieces to put the new bridge in place. So should see actually some construction things going up over the next couple of weeks.
Great.
I know they did have one hang up with one telephone pole that needed to be added, and I'm going to have to check and see if that got done yet or not.
Great. Any questions on those parts so far? All right. Then jumping on to new business, other things on COVID-19.
Other than the numbers are still going up, so, you know, we're, we're looking at ways to make the, you know, the workplaces as safe as possible again while still doing business. I'm hoping that even though the Omicron is supposedly more transmissible than the original version, that this will follow the same pattern as the original one did. And we will see that start the sharp downturn and the positive numbers starting around the end of January and going into the beginning of February. So, you know, we shall see, and we, you know, we will make adjustments weekly or daily if we have to to keep, you know, you know, our residents, our businesses and our employees safe.
Very good. Okay. Anybody, any comments about that, questions? No? All right. CARES Act update. This is just a follow-up to our last meeting, I think, Ed? Is that right?
Yes, and just to let the board know that, and I had sent out an email, but after the, after the last meeting, Chief Workman came back to me and had some ideas about improving the sign that was there without making it digital or electronic. And he felt he could do that with the monies he had available from that original CARES request for the sign. So I told him, okay, go ahead and move forward with that. He thought that the, the sign maker could get everything ordered and stored and ready to go. And this week I have not had a chance to follow up with Chief Workman to see what the status is of that. But last I knew, everything was in place.
So this is not going to be the electronic sign that we debated about?
No, it will not be electronic or digital. It'll basically be something, whether it's wooden framed or stone framed, but basically have the ability to put, you know, the posters in it or whatever. And it would have like an illumination light on each side of it so you could read it at night. But like I say, it will not have electronic changing letters or messages on it.
Okay. Any questions about that? Anybody?
And we had talked about, in the event that had to be reallocated, it was going to go, we were authorizing you to do it wherever it seemed needed. Did we make a decision about any particular department?
Well, for the sign, it would have been the school, but like I say, he feels that he can still utilize that, so.
So on the CARES Act, but not on the sign issue, we're past the December 31st date.
Correct.
When everything needed to be spent. So did we spend every penny possible or?
Like most communities, there's, there's still some money on the.
That needs, that we need to physically return or?
We'll have to return some money, yes. But just about every community I know of is in the same boat. Because there was a, there was a big push through the month of December by municipalities to act, because of the numbers starting to go up again, to actually get them to extend this. But the state said no, and the feelings are, is that they did that because the state's intent was to take any monies that are left over and actually reallocate them for their own use, so.
Do you, do you have a gut feeling? Are we talking less than $1,000, $10,000, $100,000?
I don't know at this point in time. I would guess that it's above that, but.
Really?
Yeah.
Can we get a, some kind of accounting of the CARES Act?
We'll have to do a final accounting with, with them anyway, so yes.
Okay. I thought we were, we had said, anything left over, let's not leave money on the table, let's send it over to the school. I thought we had actually.
We did, we did that, so. Like I say, I know there are some things still that we had not.
Am I on my phone?
I would say we probably expended 90%, 90% of it or more, so. You're welcome.
But since the, yeah, so the discussion the other night was if there was, if we had another choice, if we were going to, we didn't approve the electronic sign, if that wasn't going to work, that that money that had been allocated for the sign could go for the school. But now that that money is going to get used for an existing kind of sign that we would approve of normally, that money was not available.
Right.
Most departments, though, I mean, truly, I mean,
There's, yeah.
I think a large part of it, certainly all the big equipment items were bought.
Right.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming there's no money coming back from the schools, right? Because otherwise, why would we need the 12501 to go over and balance out the budget?
Right.
So that, that 12501, the receipt that was already spent was like a $43,000 receipt. So, you know, if we're talking like $2,000, $3,000, $4,000, we can show that that was already paid if it's just a matter of bookwork on our side.
Oh, yeah, right. Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, allocate as much as you can, obviously.
Yeah, for sure. Yep, okay. Okay, we'll move on if nothing else. Next item. This was a draft article in your package here that I attempted to draft. This is for the reminder, the local newspaper.
Looks great.
Their Community Outlook section. Any thoughts, comments?
That looks great.
Tried to cover sort of the year in retrospective and tried to cover most of it. I don't know. Thoughts, Francine, Joy, any, any comments on it?
Looks good.
I thought it was great, Chris.
Okay, well, if.
I think you did a really good job and you covered everything.
Okay, well, hopefully there's not too many inaccuracies. I don't think so. Hopefully not. Okay, well, with that, could I have your approval then to go ahead and submit this to the reminder editor? I think it's due in before the end of the week, so.
I'll make a motion to submit back to the reminder.
Seconded.
Okay.
Lumbras, aye.
Yep.
Ish, aye.
Piper, aye.
Groden, aye.
Fowles, aye. Okay, thanks. All right. Let's see, Revenue and Expenditures, 22 update. So we've talked about one thing with, was sort of appeared as a new, new item. I think it was actually on our last revenue report last time, but we didn't have a chance to really talk about it, which was the cannabis line. But as Ed has clarified, this is actually related to the sales tax, not the actual contribution.
Right.
Percentage that's coming in. Anybody have any questions on, on the revenue report? I had one or two that I just didn't recognize.
I do. I, I think I know the answer, but Ed, on the, on the first page of the revenue report, we have the, in the far right column, the actual number, the actual revenue and then balance. So that, just take the first line, $148,000 for fiscal year 22, personal property taxes. That number represents what's actually been received year to date, correct?
Hang on, trying to find, I've got the expense report, trying to find the revenue report.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, John.
So is it? Yeah, that's what I think, and so my question is, 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 so I would expect estimated revenue, which is zero, which is the first column after the line item number, or the accounting number, to have the number that was in the budget. So is, is it just a, just a timing issue that the revenue budget numbers haven't been entered yet? Can they not be entered until you close?
The revenue numbers have never been entered.
Yeah, this is the problem we'll be dealing with all along, John.
So this is, this is, this is one thing that I will, I will work on with Bradley going forward.
Yeah.
Because I know that in the past, there's some, some concern over what the estimated revenues would be versus what was, might actually get entered into a DLS. And there are some issues because with some of them, we recognize that there's some volatility in there, and some may be overstated and some may be understated, and we look at those revenues, it's just as long as they balance out, it's better than trying to justify a major change with DLS. So I will work with Bradley in that.
Because I guess from my point of not being here and not wanting to be here and part of the day-to-day accounting division, is that looking at the summary sheet, okay, well, we anticipate $4 million, and we're halfway through the year, so I would expect a 50% collection or reason why we're up or down. It's so, it's, I mean, $6.6 million looks great in total taxes and excise, but I don't know where we're supposed to be, and I'm.
Yeah, this has been a problem, right? All it is, is an accounting of what's come in. It's not, it's not compared to the budget at all.
Against the anticipated budget. So right now, the actual revenue is about $8.3 million, which should be real, represent real revenue through December here. I'm wondering, Ed, and I know, I know our software right now doesn't really also take that. I mean, you wouldn't take our approved budget for 22 and load that in.
Well, that, that's always been done on the expense side, just so people can see what they're expending because they're not supposed to overexpend.
For the estimated revenue, you wouldn't, you wouldn't take that and put it in the estimated revenue column because our.
Yes.
Yeah, you should. You should. Even if you expect variance, I mean, that's what you do.
Okay, all right.
But it, but it sounds like past practice was, so it's, it's not just.
It didn't, they did not get entered until later into the year, in case they needed to be adjusted.
Hard to get a handle on when you don't have the other half of the place.
Right, exactly.
We've been trying to, we've been trying to get this for a long time.
If I'm understanding, then you'll, you're going to work with Bradley to try and fill in that column of estimated revenue. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Okay, sounds good.
I mean, we've always been assured.
Just to your point, Chris, the, you know, the revenue estimate under, the revenue, the actual under the general fund is 8.3.
Right.
But if you look at the expense side, and I know it's a little later, it's 8.9. So we're looking at a gap of about $600,000.
Yep. So yeah, no, that's, that will help us if we can see that a little bit more clearly. Yep, understood.
Yep.
That would be great if that can be a project. One thing on the, just a couple of things I guess I didn't recognize, and just, just from my information, under the third page, the school funds, what's the FY22 School, I guess, Opportunity Act? What is that? $40,000 worth?
I do not know any of the school funds. I'll be honest with you.
Page three.
Yeah, well, being that it's new, I wonder, that's not the rural aid money that Bobby Jones told us about?
Which one you looking at?
Page three, last item.
Last item, the FY22 student.
Opportunity Act revenue receipts.
Must be something, it's something new. I don't.
It is something brand new, so, yeah.
So I wonder if that's the urban.
The rural.
Rural.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, the rural.
Yeah, and I'm not, I know we, I know we've added probably three to four new accounts into some of the schools.
Yep, okay.
Stuff over the last probably couple of months, so.
And I've noticed, you know, obviously you've been able to get several of the grants in here, which is great in terms of special revenue or other places where they belong, so that's good. The cannabis revenue, again, we've mentioned already, that's already the sales tax. One right above it, though, and I'm just blanking out what, what it might have been, sale of real estate, right above the cannabis revenue, about page five.
Page five?
Yeah, and it was $4,221. What did we sell?
Know exactly what that is.
What did we sell?
Property at the Butch Shores.
Oh, but that was, that wasn't this fiscal year, was it? Really?
It actually ended up getting recorded in this fiscal year, so, yes.
Okay, okay, fine.
That's the old tired up, that Fletcher's.
The erosion control, yes, thank you. Okay, all right. That's all I had for revenue questions, and I didn't recognize something offhand. Anybody have any other questions that are on the expense report?
I have a couple of questions on the expense report. Let me just get to them.
Go ahead.
Just general question.
Take the page so we know.
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm on the online version here. The first question I had was a general question, and Ed, when do we receive the match for CPA?
Usually it's in the November, December timeframe.
Do we get it?
I am not sure if we've gotten, I would, I would have to double check on that to make sure.
I think we saw and noticed that we were, of an amount we were going to get because it was a good match this time.
Well, they were predicting, at first they were saying 100%.
Yeah, but whether it came in yet, I guess.
Because I'm looking under revenue report, and this is on page eight on the online version, and it says CPA surcharges, state contributions. It says $258,904.
That would be it.
Okay, so that.
We have received it, yep.
That did come in, okay.
Okay, good.
And the other question I had had to do with the Historical Commission. I didn't realize, I guess, their budget is $2,000. How is that used? I meant to ask Bob or, you know, do you know offhand?
I'd have to go pull a report to see how they've.
Okay, because nothing's been used.
That doesn't, I know I haven't seen any submissions from them this year.
Actually, I'm sorry, it's $1,000, and the Park Commission expense is $2,000. And what is the Park Commission used for? Because they haven't used any of it either.
Well, they use it for utilities, for sure.
The water bill.
Utilities, what about, I mean, nothing goes towards the Highway Department?
They actually may use, well, depending on where it is, they may use pavilion revolving for utilities at Conan and the same at LeBree, so. I, I, I'd just have to pull, pull a report because different years they've used it for different things. I'll, I'll send you the detailed report, reading.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I'll send it to all of you.
Yeah, I was just curious because some of these things, like you said, are revolving, other ones, you know, obviously highway plays a huge role in maintaining the parks, and I think that's separate, is my understanding, but I was just wondering.
Yes, I mean, and I know that for, you know, some of the things they might get, like for the time that someone might, from the Highway Department may clean the pavilion and stuff. That is paid out of that revolving fund, but I, I know that the Highway has maintained some of those things, and the bill for the cost of any materials or whatever might stay with the, the Highway Department rather than being reimbursed from, from parks. I know for a fact, I think it was two years ago, when they did patch the cracks in the tennis courts, that basically Highway paid for those debt materials, so, yeah.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just, I just want to make sure it's still on the project list of when anybody, somebody has available time in the accounting department. Dealing with the Calplops.
Yeah.
The utility bills.
The what?
The Calplops.
The Cal Power.
Oh, Cal Power, yeah.
Getting that taken care of. And then on page two of the expense report, I'm wondering, under regional lockup assessment.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you the story behind that is.
Do we not have to check?
No, we got the check. We have to do a journal entry to put it back in. Yeah, you're right, yeah. Because they, yeah, they basically made that, well, because the state didn't approve their state budget until after July 1st, we had already paid that, so. And they had cashed the check. So they, I, they did send us a check back, and so that is a general, journal entry. I did notice that.
Okay.
And then that's because you will notice on some of these that probably most of the special town meeting items, adjustments have been made.
I was going to, it's, it's very timely to see it. We have the meeting two weeks later, the transfers are in there.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, Brett Bradley's, I mean, Bradley is great about setting up new accounts and stuff. If he had been through the special town meeting process. If he had been through the special town meeting process prior, this probably, you probably might have seen it on the report, you know, report before. But I needed to sit down with him and go through.
Francine, could you mute, sorry?
Basically all the articles.
Francine, you need to mute, sorry, there's a lot of feedback, sorry. Okay, yeah, no, that's great. And also to see, Ellen's obviously running these reports, so she's getting familiar with this as well.
That was basically for this first report in 2022 that they sent out last week. I asked Bradley to make sure she knew how to run them and to make sure that that became her every-two-week responsibility to send them out.
Very good.
And I'd just like to add to that because I complimented them the last warrant I signed, the vendor warrants. They go through the invoices with a fine-tooth comb and they find, you know, nickels and quarters and hundreds of dollars. And the bill bid previously paid, did they cross, did the payment cross the mail? I mean, they're very thorough. So I would need to compliment them publicly as well as privately.
Very good, good to hear, thank you.
Yes, they are both very detail-oriented individuals.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, and I'm assuming they're going to be taking pretty soon some level of online training and getting up to whatever they've got to do for further.
We have to find training for them, I have to ask Bradley if Soffright ever got back to them on a cost of training because they were supposed to. But yeah, it's time for me to do some reach out, get Bradley a mentor through the Auditors and Accountants Association. And then actually have them both go out and start looking at, whether it's online training or trainings that are coming up. I know I'd at least want Bradley to go to the upcoming UMass training, hopefully they'll have it this year. And if there's funding available, I'd probably like Ellen to go to it also.
He has joined, correct? He's filled out the application, paid.
Probably haven't even gone that far yet, so that's the next step, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure, good. Well, let's keep him interested and busy and trained, and we'll be sailing a little bit better than we were at this time last year, for sure. Good, any questions on expense and revenue? If not, we'll keep on moving on, all right? Okay, the next one is the Cost Efficiencies Committee. We have now with tonight, we've got one more person appointed, which is great. I have set out a meeting for next Thursday, the 13th, at 3:30, it'll be a Zoom meeting. I had originally planned on trying to do it this week, and then I realized because it's a brand-new committee, it didn't, it wasn't set up in my town gov. So I couldn't post anything. So anyway, it's all set now, it's a real committee in my town gov, so I've posted a meeting for the 13th, and we'll get started at that point in time, okay? And we're still looking for a couple of extra people, if you're out there. I believe, I think Planning Board had said that they didn't have anybody that they were going to send to us. So there's a slot open there plus at least two other slots from the public. So we have Bob Riggs tonight, and then there's two other slots that are open as well, so. But we'll get started with the numbers of people that we have, all right? Okay, good, next, all right. Somewhere in the packet here, it is time again already, somehow time has disappeared. But we're basically at the time of evaluations, and I know Ed is going to be working on and has started working on some of his direct report evaluations. But we, as the Select Board, need to do Ed's own evaluation. And so what I've put in the package here for you is just a sampling of forms. First of all, you've got a copy of the current job description for the town manager, yeah, for the town administrator, rather. And there should be an excerpt here from the PQB in terms of the kinds of things that have to be done in terms of carrying out the performance evaluation. There is also the self-evaluation form and then the performance evaluation form for management. So the first step here is, what I'd like to do is Ed will stop by tomorrow and will formally ask you to fill out, start working on your self-evaluation. And then for the rest of Select Board, and Rini, correct me if I'm missing steps here. But what I would like to do is for everybody to take a look at the job description, look at the contract that was signed last year. Take a look especially at some of the goals that we had added into there and do your best to sit down and provide your own ratings. And what I would like to do would be to get these, I'm thinking probably by our next meeting, if people could get their individual ratings form back to me individually, one by one. And then what normally happens is, I believe I would sit down and compile the comments into one evaluation form and then average the scoring amongst us five. Probably sit down and reveal that to Ed, but then it definitely would be dealt with in a public, open meeting. Probably the early February meeting would be my thought. So does that sound a little bit clear? So Ed will start with his self-evaluation, but while he's doing that, we can also work on our individual evaluations, or do you want?
I think the only thing, yeah, I think the only thing that's different is that we typically would wait to get his self-evaluation before we would. So if that could be sent to us, that'd be helpful.
All right, so if we happen to get it sooner, we will get it out to you. But I mean, here's an estimated idea of timeframe that certainly by the 14th, no, the 18th, rather, we would have as much done as we can between Ed's self-evaluation and at least try to get your evaluations done. If we can do that, if not, we will push it no later than probably the 4th of February at the very latest or whenever that next meeting is. But the idea would be to get these done as soon as quickly possible. And again, you've got various information here to sit down and read through and get yourself familiar with the duties of the town administrator, which are quite encompassing as well as the contract itself. Any questions, anybody?
So we should plan on getting you the, we're going to get his self-evaluation by what date? And we should plan on sending our evaluation to you by what date?
I'm going to say, let's see, well, certainly if we have our meeting, not sure if we'll have it all done before the next meeting here, let's see, calendar here, hold on. So the next meeting would be February 1st after the 18th. So let's say by, certainly before the 18th, you would have Ed's self-evaluation and then information into me by no later than the February 1st meeting. Maybe the 28th of February would be ideal.
Okay.
Something like that, okay? And then we'll see where we are at that point, okay?
Sounds good.
All right. Next.
Did you mean the 28th of January, the 28th of January?
Sorry, 28th of January into me.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
I have trouble finding my mute button.
I'm sorry, that's okay.
With a delayed reaction.
Yeah, no, it's fine most of the time, it's just when it's not on mute, we just get a lot of feedback, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, moving on, so next Annual Town Report, the 2021 Annual Town Report. Just to remind us, Ed, what the process is for that and how that's going to be carried out?
Did we skip something?
You skipped one, but I'll answer that.
Annual Budget Process, I'm sorry, yep.
I'll answer that question.
You both, yep.
Is that, yeah, Judy will be sending out the requests for the Annual Town Reports this weekend, next week, to all the departments and the boards and the committees. And they are due back to her for March 1st.
Okay, very good. All right, and then back to the annual budget process. So just give us an idea of some of the timelines involved in that, please.
So the budget request letters have gone out, Bradley, and then for me, Bradley has sent the departments the electronic version for them to fill out. And you get back to both Bradley and myself, they're actually due back for January 10th. I would expect that the Finance Committee will probably start scheduling departments to come in and do a presentation to them. Probably shortly after mid-January. And in the letter, it is specific that all departments have had to, have had that done. And actually, all the, all regular departments, non-school, are supposed to have their budgets in by January 10th. The two school districts, Hampshire Regional and Norris, have some statutory requirements. So basically, they have been told that they need to have their budget request to the Finance Committee in time for the Finance Committee to have their recommendation to the Select Board no later than April 1st. And then, you know, something that hasn't been done since I've been here, and I don't know how you feel about it. And obviously, it probably wouldn't fit into a regular meeting schedule. But, you know, does the Select Board wish to entertain some of these departments to do presentations on their budgets directly to the Select Board?
In addition to Finance Committee?
Mm-hmm.
My initial thought is I don't want to undermine the Finance Committee's role.
I mean, it feels like we could sit in and just be quiet and listen to meetings, right? And not, I don't know.
Well, I.
I don't, it kind of feels like it would be putting everybody through a burden to present twice. And given our, where our meetings go, that just seems like that could be a lengthy process to have that come to us as well. I think, you know, assuming that you'd have a couple of committee or a couple of department heads, I'm guessing, would at most report, I mean, present their budget ideas to the, or budget requests to the Finance Committee at a given meeting, right? I mean, probably no more than a couple of departments or a department and a couple.
I would, especially when they're the larger departments, I would say no more than two at a meeting. Maybe some of the smaller departments, they might be able to get three in, but yeah.
Okay, so I mean, that's going to be a schedule of meetings already with Finance, which is going to take up a good amount of time. I don't feel like there's a need to meet separately with the department heads myself.
So as the one who would have to be there anyways.
Yes.
Yeah, you guys should be there with me. But I wonder if, I wonder if there should be like a two-pronged approach to this. Pick a department that, you know, cemetery, tree warden, well, tree warden has the whole tree issue. But I mean, if they're submitting a budget that has a zero increase, right, if it's a flat line, maybe those get all packed together. I think, I think the top three department, well, I think Fire EMS, Police, and Highway Department. I think that's where we're going to want to clearly understand.
Schools.
School, well, yeah, school, but I think schools should be separate. But those three departments, I think that's where the most questions are going to come up. And it, like, for those, it might be worth, so maybe if you're asking for a budget increase that is in excess of 2%, whatever, overall, pick a number.
Do you want to add?
You know, yeah, as a starting point. I also think from the Finance Committee's point of view is, I do believe that they are truly open to a new approach.
Yeah.
And possible joint sessions on key things. But again, pick and choose which topics they are.
Yeah. Good point, okay.
So.
That'd be interesting, a joint meeting, yeah.
Yeah, maybe a joint, yeah, that would make more sense than two separate meetings, so that would be a little bit more palatable on everybody's.
Right, and let Finance take the lead, right? And then we're just, that way we, we're not violating quorum.
We're hearing everything at the same time, that might not be a bad idea. Francine or Joy, any thoughts about that idea? Maybe some.
I think it's a good one, I think it will, I mean, we should be on the same page, and working together will help us get there.
Mm-hmm, okay, yep. Joy, any thoughts?
No, I think a joint meeting is a good idea.
Okay, all right, well, that's, whenever you've got a next Finance meeting, maybe you can suggest that idea and, you know, let us know what it might be looking like for a schedule of where people might want to start.
Everyone's fine with it, I can summarize what I just said and send it to the Finance Committee and copy that on it.
Yeah.
And let them start noodling on it.
I think getting Norris' budget too, I mean, last year, you know, it was on the later side, so getting people to, I mean, that April 1st deadline sounds wonderful to me.
Well, we internally, as far as Hampshire Regional will be done, right? Because they've got to be done by February 15th.
Right.
But the Superintendent and the Business Administrator are fully aware that this local school committee expects to vote on the budget on the second Wednesday in March.
Okay, good.
Good.
So that would meet this April 1st deadline.
Absolutely, that would be a whole lot.
I think we ironed out all the, shall we say, misconceptions or whatever, you know, from last year, so. And I know, and I should have thought about it when basically Bobby had called me up and asked me what our town meeting was. Because basically what they do, had done in the past was simply say Hampshire Regional gets done first. Then they'd call around to the five towns and say, okay, when's your town meeting? And basically, all they did was, okay, whoever had the first town meeting date was the next one done, second one, third one, blah, blah, blah. Well, last year, we had, frequently, we have the last one. But because of the timing and everything, you know, they did not know of the bylaw that required that April 1st recommendation from Finance to the Select Board. So it actually, that recommendation came in after that.
And this will be the first year up at Central Office.
Right.
That Bobby has a dedicated assistant.
Yeah.
So the reports are being done much more timely, actually, on some of them, she's five or six weeks ahead of where traditionally she is. So they're in a good spot and I think it's going to work out.
And I will say that Superintendent and Bobby had reached out to me to have a meeting with me, which we did a couple of weeks ago, and I think it went, you know, very well. So it was a good, honest exchange between, you know, the Central Office and myself, I think, not only on the process, but some of the priorities and whatever.
Great, very good.
And you said that the, what is their timetable? Because I guess I'm a little concerned about the preliminary budget number. What is, has the Hampshire Regional School Committee voted yet on any?
So they got their first draft last night, that's the 4.7, correct, yeah. They'll have to do it, to meet the February deadline, they have to do it by the first week in February.
Yeah, good, well, this is sounding like things are coming together and are definitely more on the schedule than they were last year, so that's great to hear. So thanks, let's try to keep it there and keep us informed if there's some slippage and something that goes a little bit sideways, let's know about it as it happens, okay? All right, let's see, I think in the agenda, the VOIP update, is that where I am?
Yes, and we're almost ready to do that. I just need everybody to be back from vacation so I can do a final count of phones and phone lines to give to the vendor to move forward. And David Brooks is staying on my case to provide that, so.
Do we have a rough idea when this might happen? I mean, in terms of really installation?
I would, well, I would probably say we'll probably put everything into place for the quantities and everything next week. And then after that, it's just a, how long will it take for them to get any of the required equipment? And then the other thing I will make sure is that we don't try to implement this thing at a time where, whether it's all departments or any departments, are anticipating, needing, you know, receiving a bunch of phone calls on items, so.
Yeah. Yeah, well, hopefully too, though, we can have it and have it implemented in a kind of one fell swoop rather than necessarily dragging it out like we had to do with the laptops.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, good. All right, any questions so far on anything? All right, next is the ARPA survey update. I think I'm at the end of it, I might just send it out to one or two of you again just to have it tried. But it's just been some design issues behind the scenes that it won't let me do certain logic questions, but I think it's pretty okay. So my goal will be to just check it one more time maybe, but then to actually get it live, to send it out. It'll be a link that people would have to link to, just click on our link, so we'd have to have it put up on our website. And then I guess we'd get it out on whatever, our own Facebook page, the Southampton Community page. I'm going to do some hard copies as well as we did the last survey, so we'll have hard copies probably at the senior center and at the library to hand out. And we'll have our famous homemade ballot box sitting out on the stonewall out front here to return any paper copies. And hopefully have it open for about a month or so until, you know, at the latest, mid-February, probably. And hopefully have it open for about a month or so until, you know, at the latest, mid-February, probably, and just see what we got. So it's only about ten or twelve questions, and it really shouldn't take anybody very long to, to do it. So I'm hoping that we don't have too many glitches on it, and I think it should work okay, okay? All right.
And, and can we, at some point in the next couple of meetings, can we, the money has to be used up by 2024.
Right, yes.
So I'm just wondering at some point, I just want to make sure that we have, like, we create a timeline. Where we're, you know, the survey will be back by such and such a date, the cutoff, and then, you know, there'll be-
Yep.
-department head sort of survey or whatever. I just want to make sure that we have, we create a timeline for this.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I mean, some of it may, you know, sort of coincide with a lot of the budget work that we're, you know, a lot of things are going to kind of collide at some point now, but no, we do need to keep that on a separate track by itself there, too. Yep, very good. Okay, any other business that can't wait until the next regular meeting of January eighteenth? Anything out there for anybody? No, hearing none?
No.
Okay, then we have a few, a few more signatures to do. We took the, the Fire Department-related ones out of the mix, so I believe we have a couple of PRFs and a couple of PCFs. So I guess I have, what do I have here? Let me see. So for the, I don't know that I see, we have a PCF for the COA.
Yeah, I think that, I think-
In my, yeah.
Be a PCF, not a PRF.
Is there a PRF, too?
No.
Okay.
That was already approved at the last one.
Okay, so why don't you fill us in, John, and since you were at-
So we have, so the first one should read a PCF, Council on Aging, Temporary Administrative Assistant, regarding approval to hire as a temporary for twelve weeks, or not to exceed twelve weeks, non-benefited position for the Council on Aging Admin Assistant, ten hours per week at a rate of fifteen ninety-five, fifteen ninety-one per hour.
Now, is this a PRF or PCF?
PCF. And the individual is Mary Hatzzi Petrow.
Mm-hmm, yep. Okay. Now, is this, okay, just, just for clarity, on our, just so I'm not confused, on our agenda, is that on here twice?
Well, there's a PRF on it at the beginning.
Yeah.
Well, that, we are, so we approved that two weeks ago, or we approved that back in December, which then allowed the director to post the job. She has posted the job, ten days have completed. This is the application that her and her hiring authority opted to move, or this is the individual that her and her hiring authority opted to move forward and offer the position to.
Or a temporary assistant for twelve weeks?
Correct, so, correct, so looking at the agenda, so the PRF listed, we already did, we already voted on that.
At the last meeting?
Right, she then went and posted it, left it open for ten days, made a selection on the applicants that came forward.
And now we-
This is the individual, they're pretty forward.
Okay, and you were mentioning to me earlier that she had, she, the COA Director had, at the time, come into us originally with a PRF, but it was, it was directly for the temporary person rather than an emergency appointment?
Correct, so, again, our understanding, and I'll say our, my interpretation of the book, is that for an existing position that is within the budget, the department head is allowed to do a two-week emergency appointment to fill the post, and the two weeks allows time to get it before the PPP Board to follow all the approval courses. In this particular case, the director didn't do the two-week emergency appointment and opted just to go for the immediate posting, right, which, the twelve-week temporary post.
I just need to correct that, because I suggested, and, and I believe an emergency position was needed for the two weeks, and that was not, for whatever reason, was never moved along. And so they've ended up being almost a month without an administrative assistant in that department. I just want to bring that up to be. I think the emergency is, is, is a valuable tool.
I, I agree, I, I don't believe we received that actual request.
No, you didn't.
Right, okay.
Okay.
And then when, when we did meet back in December, we explained the process and how to go through this, and, and so that gets us to today. Right, went through the process, and now they have this, they plan on having this person up to twelve weeks, potentially shorter, because the next item we're going to, I'll brief you on, is the program coordinator's post.
Can I ask a question about this one, though, before we move on?
Yep.
This form would be really helpful if it said the date, I mean, maybe that we don't know, the date that it's starting, and therefore, because it's up to twelve weeks, I think last time, Ed, you had to go run and check on, you know, if the form said, you know, when, when someone needs to be re-appointed. So, I mean, there's no date on here for when this starts, do we know?
They haven't been hired yet.
Well, let me throw this piece back at you, that at this point in time, there cannot be a date of when this starts, because number one, it hasn't been approved.
Okay.
And then the person has to accept, and they have to come to a starting date.
Okay.
So, I mean, I under, I fully understand what you're saying, it would be nice, but-
Right.
It's, you really don't know.
Okay, okay, well, we did, yeah, so unlike the Fire, though, we put them at twelve fifteen, but that was a request for the-
What's that?
For the Fire, we made those effective twelve fifteen.
Those were retro payments, right?
Well, they were retro, so you have to, as a retro, you'll have to specify the date.
All right, so what would be the, I mean, one would assume they'd want to get this person hired as soon as possible, given that they've been without, right? So.
So if, if we were to approve this tonight, they could move forward rapidly tomorrow.
Yeah.
Potentially, and then that would be the effective date.
Okay, does that sound reasonable, everybody? Okay?
Yep.
All right, so all those, let's take this one by its, well, no, we've got two for the COA?
No, I, I would do the, the, I would do, I would just do this one.
So this is the, the admin assistant who's replacing Darlene Motico, right, who resigned?
Correct.
This is a standing, yeah, okay.
Yep.
Standing position at-
Yeah, and it has all the proper signatures.
Okay, very good. Okay, all those in, do I have a motion, I'm sorry?
I'll motion if I didn't already do.
Yep, okay. John moved, Francine, you want a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, okay, all those in favor, roll call, please.
Lumber, I.
Tishman, I.
Piper, I.
Groden, I.
Fowles, I. Okay.
This is the one for Mary Hatzipetrov?
Hatzipetrov, right, okay, that one's taken care of.
There is on the agenda the PRF of the COA Program Coordinator, which is a different position, which they hope to create.
Right, so I can, I can give you an update on that, but I don't, do not believe there's any, there's any action required tonight.
Okay.
So the update on that is that we did meet last night, we did score the job, job description. I'm not familiar, past practices, how it worked, but last night, the, the way we did it is the three active members of the committee were at the table. We invited the department head to the table, we read each question or description, and then by consensus, came to a, came to a rating, and then tallied the scores. And it came to a grade four position, which I believe, going off memory, is somewhere between fourteen fifty-four and twenty-two ninety-one within the steps.
Sounds right.
And the next step in that process is for that to go to Finance, because it's a new position. So Finance needs to approve that, once they do that, then it would come to the Select Board for final approval.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Then we have, then we have the, I believe the only thing left is the Treasury.
Treasury Collector, we have.
So I-
Well, we have-
I think we should take these separately.
Well, there's a, there's a-
Actually, we'll have three.
There's a temporary position, that's what's on the agenda, so, twelve-week temporary position, but you've got a, in my packet, I've got a two-week emergency appointment, so I'm a little unclear.
Right, so we acted on, we, we, the emergency two-week appointment was on our agenda, we acted on that, and we act, we acted on all three of these.
All right, so we don't have all of these on our agenda, but can we go ahead and take these on our agenda? If they have not been listed, we only have the temporary twelve-week position, right? Am I wrong?
Correct, we don't have the emergency appointment.
No.
Yeah, this is, this is one of those ones where I didn't have the forms, because John had already-
Cleaned out my box.
Taken them, so I tried to do my best, just from my memory from the la, our last meeting and the PPPB agenda. So I would probably say that-
Do we take it up under the, any other necessary business?
You could do, yeah, you could do that, or just say it's an omission by me, because I didn't, the paper wasn't, paperwork wasn't there for me to check on.
For the two-week appointment?
Right.
Now, is the, is the two-week appointment evolving into the temporary appointment?
I do not believe so.
And the rationale why we need the emergency appointment now?
Well, so-
So they don't have to wait.
Do you want, do you want me to bring it up with, under discussion without a motion, and, and just give an overview?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, yeah, I thought we had a motion, I'm sorry. So let's, let's take the emergency one, if, if we're taking it up as part of this under, well, I guess we're taking it a little bit out of order in terms of other business, or, no, what are we taking it up under?
Any other necessary business?
Other necessary business, we, we're kind of back on that previous agenda item. We'll take up the, the emergency one, yeah, go ahead.
I'll move to approve the emergency two-week position.
Okay, I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, then give us a little feedback.
Okay, so this, this has an employee that has already vacated the position, an existing position. The department head is requesting authorization for an emergency two-week appointment to take effect on January tenth in hopes that it passes tonight. The tempor, the two-week emergency employee is an existing employee in another department, would not be working the full number of hours, because they're committed during the morning shift and to another department, so it would only be in the afternoons, not to exceed fifteen hours, which is under the thirty-hour budget. And it was, felt that the reason why this needs to be emergency is because of the time of year right now, the tax bills have gone out, the money's coming in, there's work to be done, this particular person has experience in the office, he could pinch-hit for a two-week period, to allow the department head to get approval to post for a temporary position of not to exceed twelve weeks, and get the ten-day add-out there in waiting period, and limit the amount of downtime within that office. It, it, the department head did not believe that this person had any interest in continuing on to the additional twelve-week appointment, and was merely doing it to, to help out for the two-week period.
Mm-hmm, okay. Just one note on the date, it's 2022?
Oh, yeah. Missed that.
We'll have to get used to it.
It sounds like a very good plan.
Yeah, and I will, just for, just for the transparency, I will just share with the group that the, the person that stepped down and left was making seventeen dollars and twenty-nine cents per hour. The rate suggested here is nineteen twenty-five for half of the amount of the hour, so there, there are funds there. And it, it was, the, the department head's belief, again, this is a two-week emergency, just to help me out, you know, match the wage that they have at the Highway Department for the two weeks to come over, and that's it.
Right, and the temporary PCF calls for seventeen and change?
Correct, I just, I just want to make sure it's understood that-
And so, and then, so at the Highway Department, this person is already doing the twenty hours, is that right? And then this would be another-
And then five at, five at the transfer, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, no, twenty, twenty or twenty-five?
Twenty at Highway, five at Transfer Station.
So twenty-five over there, and then up to fifteen?
Fifteen, stay below forty, yeah.
Yeah, okay, just barely, okay.
Just a couple of things, I, I will say that I did have a talk with the Treasurer Collector today, and just to go over some things, and yes, it's a very busy time of year. The payments for the taxes will be coming back, the ta, payment for the water bills will be coming back. She's also got the responsibility of doing the budget and a couple of other things. And then to boot, by starting the fiscal year 2021 cleanup vendor today, there's a bunch of information that she has to get to them. So number one, I definitely support filling this on the emergency two-week appointment, I definitely feel there's a need. And, you know, last night at the PPPB meeting, because I thought there might be questions coming up on the, the rate of nineteen twenty-five an hour, I did ask the Chair of the PPPB if he would read off the pay scale for the grade of this position, and someone with twelve years' experience, which the individual for the, that would fill this for the two-week, emergency two-week appointment, does have in the Treasurer's office. And actually, John came back and that, at that step twelve mark, it was actually twenty-two dollars and some change. So I think the nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents an hour, which is consistent with the rate the individual makes in the Highway Department and Transfer Station, is definitely applicable.
And why does the posting say up to seventeen twenty-nine?
For the, for the temporary position?
Yeah.
Because that would be for the full thirty hours, and we budgeted seventeen twenty-nine. So potentially, if she gets somebody, if the department head gets somebody that doesn't have these, maybe doesn't have a full year of credible service within that group, they wouldn't be entitled to seventeen twenty-nine, she could start them at a lesser step and still be within the group.
What if she finds somebody who has the equivalent of a lot more experience?
She can't exceed seventeen twenty-nine, because it would be over budget.
That's all we budget. This is for the clerk position.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you're saying that this position, as it currently exists, has a range that does go up to twenty-two something?
Correct, it's a, it's a level six, I'm, I'm sorry, it's a grade six. And that current scale is fourteen sixty-eight to twenty-four sixteen. And that's per the April 2017 schedule.
April 2017?
I think that's referred to as the Jacobs one.
You know, well, I think it would be great if the PQB made a decision around what pay scale they're using.
We need to understand.
Yeah, that's not the Jacob scale, that's the one that, that's the scale they've been using for a number of years.
We need to-
And was that updated on the years where there were COLAs, and not updated on the years that there weren't COLAs?
No, that's the, that's the 2021 schedule.
So it's current and accurate to what people's current pay is? It's a grade what?
I, six.
I have an older scale here, grade six, number ten is up to eighteen oh one. So that's, somebody else has a more current, Town of Southampton, PQB Waging Classification scale?
Well, first of all, there are two different scales, there's an exempt and a non-exempt, so make sure you're comparing-
This is a non-exempt.
Okay.
Yeah.
So grade six goes, and again, there were issues-
Grade six across, steps are up and down, six, I mean-
That had been part of the issue, was errors had been made before in terms of what was the grade.
Is that the current, current scale?
Up until forty-eight hours ago, I didn't even know there was, there was a whole different scale for the Fire Department. So clarity on this subject would certainly-
Yeah, that's-
Be welcomed.
So this is the current one that PQB uses for non-exempt, and grade six goes up to eighteen oh one?
No, the grades across the top at six, and then the steps are up and down.
Oh, I see.
That's been the issue before, is understanding whether you're reading left, right, or up to down.
Okay, so this position is what, what step and what grade?
It, well, it just says a sixth grade.
We only grade them, we don't determine what step they are, that creates the range.
Just a grade six grade is all that's here, there's no step put in here. So it shows the, the range for the grades.
The grades are across the top, and the steps are up and down, from my memory.
Right, so this is-
Which is opposite to every one I've ever seen before this.
Yeah, they're, they're totally different from anything else.
So from eleven to twenty-four sixteen?
Correct.
It seems like a huge range.
I think, I think the, we were told that the, the person filling the temporary post had twelve years' experience, so if you look at the step twelve, assuming they came in at step one, that was, that's in excess of the nineteen dollars.
Okay, well, anyway, it's for two weeks, and it's on par with what the person is currently making at the Highway Department. The money's in here for the two weeks, that's all we're focusing on now, we understand.
Well, I still think there's, there's something about it that does bother me, I mean, this is a position that is currently, I mean, I'm going to go ahead and support it, because I, I do think if that is accurate, then, I mean, I think it makes sense to go with that. Now I'm curious about what you just said about the Program Coordinator position, it was, it was scored as what?
A grade four.
A grade four?
A coordinator is less than a-
Than an admin?
Don't go by the title.
An admin, mhm.
I can provide you the nineteen seventy book that we used.
So you're saying that a Program Coordinator- So you're saying that a program coordinator, which is supposed to be a jump-up from an admin assistant, which they're currently trying to do, is, is a lower grade than the third, the clerk in the office?
Yep.
Wow.
Yes, I mean, I, I wasn't involved when that grading was created, so.
Yeah, we've got to, got to do some serious work on that.
The whole, the whole thing needs serious work, in my opinion.
As we get into our officiant sees committee, et cetera, that's, that's going to be, I don't know, we'll tackle it, but it's certainly a topic, I'm sure, for discussion. All right, so we have a motion on the table and a second for a two-week emergency appointment for the individual who currently works at the highway department at the same rate of $19.25 for that two-week period. All those in favor? Roll call.
Lumbras, aye.
Fishman, aye.
Piper, aye.
Uh, I just want to clarify one thing before I vote on this. This appointment has no consequence to the permanent position, this, this rate of pay. We're still also approving this thing that actually says up to 1729, which is the budget, right?
That I was going to, because it's a separate motion.
That'll be a separate one, right.
Aye, Roden, aye.
Falls, aye. Okay. Temporary one, emergency one, sorry. Emergency appointment is okay. Moving on.
So then the, I believe the last one that we have is for a P R F temporary position. P P B met, uh, the budget currently has this as a grade six at 30 hours at $17.29. And so they're asking for approval up to $17.29 so not to exceed the budget. And you will note that the finance committee's signature is lacking. So we're asking the select board to approve it pending finance committee's approval, I believe. To keep the process going to allow the 10-day posting and try and limit the downtime that there's no one in that position, assuming she gets 175 applicants.
And this, this would again be a grade six?
Correct.
And the 17 falls where on that scale that we were just looking at? So somebody coming in would not necessarily start it as step one, is that correct?
Correct. Well, step one is $11.
Okay.
So the first one that we get to minimum wage is step five, and that's 1468. So 1729 is between step seven and step eight. Because again, unlike collective bargaining agreements, you don't annually move up every step currently. You only get if a 2% was awarded that year, which is why, other than your starting number, you're probably never going to find your number again on the scale.
This requires one to three years' experience and a high school diploma or equivalent. Okay, anybody's thoughts? I mean, this is what P Q B has recommended here.
And there's two P R Fs, correct, John? One for a temporary position and one for the full-time, right?
Correct. My, my thought is since the full-time's not on here, I mean, I guess we could wait for that one to come back from finance because that, that's at least 12 weeks out.
Yeah, we can wait on that one, I think. Let's wait on that one. Let's take up the temporary one for the, um.
Well, actu, actually I think it is on here, just in weird nomenclature. I believe the, shall we say, long-term one is the one that says P R F regarding vacated position of administrative treasurer, collector, clerk. Because again, I was taking these off the P P B agenda, so I believe they're both on here. It's just not clear.
All right.
Well, I'll talk to the clerk about cleaning up their use of wording on the agenda.
Well, I, I, I've already turned around and, and I've, uh, just going forward, at least in the interim, Judy will be checking the P P B mailbox every day. She will be make, number one, making copies for me, so I have a record of what's going through. And she will actually then scan them and send them to you, John.
Okay.
And then the offer is still also good if you would like to utilize Judy to put your agendas together and what have you, so.
Okay, so we have two P R Fs. One is a temporary one and the other is for the permanent position for the treasurer collector, uh, office, the admin collector clerk position, right? Up to 1729. So should somebody come in with less experience, they could be at somewhere at that 14 or the $15 range.
Correct. Yep. It doesn't lock her into paying the 1729.
Right. So do temporary positions benefited?
Not during the first 12 weeks when they're, after, if that person that fills the 12-week position is then converted into the full-time position, they would then become benefited.
Well, this basically says the town of Southampton is currently accepting applications for the position of a temporary administrative treasurer, collector, clerk, hours of money through Thursday, 8 to 4:30. This is a 30-hour per week benefited position. That's not right then?
Yeah, we missed that.
Yeah, so for the temporary position, it's not a benefited position, right?
Right.
Right.
So we'd strike that.
Yep. For that 12-week period. Okay, let's be clear that that gets, thank you for catching that. That that gets corrected. All right, so with that correction, are we ready to make a motion on these?
Well, does the actual, uh, P R F specify non-benefit, no benefits?
Well, the P R F would not specify that. A P C F that came back from that would. That's when you get into the part-time benefit or non-benefit.
A person hired, you'd have that on there. But the position vacancy, if it's for the temporary, do we have to have an advert for the temporary position? Yes, we do, yes. So we have to put in there, non-benefited for the 12-week period.
Have it posted, yep.
Right, so non-benefited for the 12-week period on that one. Okay. Okay, so with that change, are we okay to vote on the two of these together? And if so, can I have a motion to that effect?
So I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll move that we approve the P R F for the administrative treasurer, collector, clerk, temporary position not to exceed 12 weeks with a pay rate up to $17.29 per hour for a maximum of 30 hours per week, subject to finance approval. And in addition, that we approve the admin treasurer, collector, clerk, permanent position up to 1729, 30 hours, not to exceed 30 hours per week, uh, subject to finance committee approval.
And benefited on this other one?
Correct, on, on the permanent one, yes.
Right.
On the one, yes.
So making the change on the non, on the temporary one to non-benefited?
Right.
Okay, all right. Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. So in the, in the theory of somebody has, you know, 20 years' experience, 12 years' experience, whatever, so basically with this permanent position, we can't hire anybody because of the current budget that has a lot of experience. We certainly couldn't hire the person who's on the emergency assignment unless they want to take a cut in pay. So we, 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 we're not able to do, uh, we can't hire anybody that's very experienced because of the limits of this, even though the range for the position is higher, right?
Right, because the funds aren't available, unless they could be identified.
Technically, you can hire someone with more experience, but they have to work for that amount of pay because that's the limitation of it.
Even though the range in the P Q B for this position goes up to a higher amount?
Correct, because you cannot overexpend the budget, so it has to be approved. You have to hire for that approved amount. Or up to that approved amount. You can't hire above it.
Right. Okay. Does that answer your question? Okay. All right, we're ready to vote, I think. All, all those in favor, roll call, please.
Lumbras, aye.
Fishman, aye.
Piper, aye.
Roden, aye. Falls, aye. Okay.
Can I ask one other question of John, I think, on the program coordinator? I mean, I, I was involved in the job description. We're trying to go from having someone who's the assistant, who's left, to be the program coordinator, to bring the position up. And it doesn't sound like it was scored any higher than the assistant administrator, which is two grades below this clerk position. The requirement is an associate's degree, whereas this position is a, um, high school diploma. So can you just, like, I'm not sure how we, how, how the P Q B landed at grade, or step four.
Sure, I can, I can, I can do a 50,000-foot review. So we, we are giving, we're giving a form.
Yeah.
That has three columns. We have to figure out whether it's a unit one, unit two, or unit three. They're nomenclature. Unit one is manufacturing and maintenance, so that might be D P W, but that's it. We determine, and again, the people having the conversation at the table was the director of the council and the two of the three P P B board members, because one had to recuse herself.
Right, right.
But she did provide input if asked specific questions.
Right.
And then, so unit two is a clerical, technical, and service position, usually determined to be a non-exempt under the terms of F L S A, is an hourly position, so we went with that. So you then have to.
I'm not sure it's a clerical position, is it? Doesn't sound like what.
Well, the other one would be a supervisor, professional, sales, or administrative position.
Okay, all right.
Two, and it would have to be an exempt position.
Well, currently we don't have, we, that has to be relooked at too, I think, in this town. We have department heads that are.
You know, we're going into Pandora's box here.
Exactly, I understand. We have, we have department heads that are hourly.
You're going to find these inconsistencies throughout and, and somebody has to take this thing and right-size it for everybody, not, not, that, that, that's all. It's just, it's not making any sense.
I, I would say this, after going, after going through this exercise last night, so in, in my, my day job as CFO, I also wear the H R director's hat and have that department under me. I haven't seen this since the 70s.
Haven't seen what?
The, the scoring process. This is not how anybody outside of a selective service organization does it. And, and while yes, there was a time when municipalities wore selective services, it's not now. I personally think, and, and I made the recommendation there, and I went back and I saw some minutes where, um, Art Lawrence was the former chair. He made, he made a motion and got approval from P P B four or five years ago in 2017 to recommend the entire thing needs to be disbanded. And, and, and my push is really for that. And if we can't get there because we can't fund an H R position, then there might be an exercise to go through and just redo this whole thing from a slate and create a stating point because there's a lot of tension among staff and, and boards. And are you going off the 17 study or the 21 one?
Yeah, we do, we don't seem to have a level of consistency or understanding anyway of how anything is being applied.
Correct.
And I think that, certainly the intent, I mean, I, following what, what Reenie said. I mean, I thought the intent was to make this sort of a, you know, a higher level than an admin clerk type person. We just did the admin.
And I don't, I don't disagree with that, but the P, the charge of the P P B wasn't, that's not our charge. Our charge is, this is the tool, we have to score it.
Right.
It, it was, I mean, the director agreed with every score we had. And the one that we differed on, where the committee thought it was a two and the director thought it should be a three, we gave it a two and a half. So we compromised on it to come up. Now, that being said, if I went through and applied the same lo, my logic to the position we just talked about, I, I'm pretty certain it wouldn't be a grade six.
The other thing too is, I mean, I, I don't want to undermine any elected board like P Q B. And I really do try to allow them to do their part and then us to do our part. But it just seems like there's so many things that need to be fixed when it comes to this whole process. And that's why I thought for a town of 6,200 people, it really should be a, you know, there should be a regional service. I mean, I think I'd love to have cost efficiencies, look at, look at that sort of thing because there'd be a little bit more bigger picture way of doing things. And it wouldn't be, I mean, I've sat and watched some P Q B meetings, not the current one, but it becomes department heads heavily lobbying, which they should do. Department head people support their direct reports, but it's not, no, it's not objective at all.
And, and on a side note, we did receive a communication today from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission that we are going to move forward with the regional study for H R and additional funds have been allocated. And the Collins or Dunham?
Collins Center.
Collins Center is actually going to do it.
Oh, good.
That's good. Yeah, they did a great job on the past.
That is encouraging. Okay.
Well, I know that when Ed present, I mean, the, the Jacob study, we as a select board voted to use that to just determine where to give additional percentage increases for the budget last year. Because if you look at all the different steps and which positions are grouped in different ones, I think it's logical. I, I, I really do. I think that the, you know, there might have been one or two that I was surprised about, but it kind of reminded me, nope, that position is the assistant in that office, therefore it really should be where it is. I just made sense, but I don't know why, um, you know, I guess would have, it would be difficult to adopt that now because we have people that are currently getting paid based on the old scale. So we just need to overhaul the whole process, in my mind.
All right, well, I think we, did we vote on this already? We're done?
Yes.
I believe we did.
Yep.
All right, I think we're done with all signatures?
Yep.
Okay. All right, no licenses, no warrants tonight. We have a couple of minutes to approve, September 19, October 19, November 2. These are the short minutes.
And I'll make a motion to approve all those minutes, September 19, October 19, and November 2. They were basically open session to vote to go into executive session.
Right.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Roll call.
Lumbras, aye.
Roden, aye.
Fishman, aye.
Falls, aye. Okay, we heard Joy in there. All right. So basically, Kathy's still working on the regular minutes for the in-between meetings. And hopefully we'll get a couple of those for our next meeting. She's been behind on getting those to us, okay?
If we don't have the opportunity to get the minutes from the last meeting, can we at least have the typed-up version of the charge and composition of the public safety committee?
Yeah, that would be a good idea. Perhaps Judy could do that or something?
If someone can, please send me the Word version of that and we can make the amendments to it.
The Word version? You had something in Word that you were with.
Well, you had something you were working off that you made amendments and changes.
It was a recommendation from the public safety committee.
That was the document that was in our packet that we modified, so, yeah.
So, I mean, Word, a Word version would make it much easier to update than they.
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Than basically a scanned or.
Yep, yep, yep.
P E F.
Sure. All right, briefly, um, some pending items. So bylaws for legal review, I think we had talked about this. We're, we're looking, there's a bylaws committee meeting Francine mentioned tomorrow. I think there's going to be a final look from the committee on the three that had gone before, the, um, public comment, uh, public information session, nuisance soliciting and numbering of buildings, and then the latest one that we've been working on, the naming bylaw. And so those will be just a final look-through by the bylaw committee and will be on the agenda for our final look at, right, Francine, for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and then be ready to pass on, hopefully to K P Law to get looked at for eventually the.
Town meeting.
The town meeting in May. Okay. Old Town Hall, I think we mentioned it briefly. We're waiting on Hill and Associates to come back to us with some scope of work about the urgent work that has got to get done. So designing a, a scope of work to be able to put out for, for, is it actually proposal or bid on that, Ed? Is that what it would be for the Old Town Hall? This couple of work would allow us to put out a.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, okay. Uh, charter building, I don't know that there's any update.
No, there's not.
About that happening. Clearwater Woodlands. I think I heard you say you might go hiking someday.
I, I did, and I actually volunteered this weekend, then I remember, you remembered I was away and off, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably not this weekend, but the following weekend I will see if either Cindy or Reenie wants to go out there with me and.
I did volunteer to do that, but remember I told you I'm getting tested next Wednesday because I'll be away next weekend?
Ah, yes. Is that the fence issue? Is that the fence at the dog?
Yeah.
But I can go during the.
I can go with you if you want.
Maybe, okay.
Yeah, let me know.
I'll sneak out there in the week then.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you could get the, you want to get the, the G I S or whatever to go with?
G P S, yes.
G P S, rather.
And we'll just mark the, we'll mark the two points.
Yeah, let's get it off there.
I'll also take some paint out there and try to make it clear.
If you narrow down when, when it's going to be and then you tell me a day ahead of time, I can let that individual know and he might even just meet you out there.
Okay.
So if you want.
Might be a good idea to go.
Yeah, I'll be glad to go too.
Okay.
In my neighborhood, yep.
All right. Great, all sorts of volunteers here. All right. Last one, the Green Community Grant, um, just further updates. I think you were mentioning that you were going to. were mentioning that you were going to.
Yeah, I haven't gotten a chance to follow up with, with them yet. I'll, I'll get to it next week.
So we need to understand, I think, just, you know, the level of cost savings that we may have already achieved and what, what else we might have in the, in the works to try and do, is that it?
Right.
All right, so let's keep that one on the agenda for sure, and see if we could get a little bit more detail and maybe not have to have all these as pending items for a while. Select Board meetings, so you mentioned an executive session next.
Tuesday.